Hadi.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Denny.
Here.
Counselor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Here.
There's ten members present, one is absent.
Public hearings been scheduled to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the community development block grant program application regarding the needs of the town homeless population and potential project ideas. Today, a notice was a public hearing was published in Hartford Cour on Friday, May 25, 2018. The Town of Enfield Legal Notice, the Town of Enfield, the Enfield Town Council will hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut on Monday, June 4, 2018, at 6:50 PM to allow all interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinions regarding the needs of the town's homeless population and potential project ideas. Submitted by Susan Olnicki, Town Clerk, dated May 22, 2018. The ground rules for the public hearing, there is no time limit, but I ask each person not to take up too much time so that everyone have an opportunity to speak. After each person who desires has had one chance to speak, we shall permit those individuals desire a second chance. Those individuals who speak for a second time, we shall permit those individuals desire a third, fourth, et cetera. Please refrain from personalities. And I would ask anyone on this who would like to speak on this public hearing. Specifically for this public hearing. Lorraine? Make sure the red button's on, your name and address. Thank you, Lorraine.
Lorraine Creedon, 57 Cottage Road, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm the treasurer for Enfield People for People and the Safe Harbor Warming Center. And I'm glad to see that we're doing something, moving to shelter our homeless and keep them safe. We were very fortunate this year in having, most of the people who stayed at our shelter had someplace to go when we were done. There were only several that did not go. Unfortunately, one man passed away. But I would like to stress that we, you know, this is a good start and I think it's a great start in the end because the people don't like to come in. They don't like to go into offices. They don't like to go in and say that they need something. So I think that us as working as a shelter, that we would be able to, not a shelter, excuse me, warming center, that we would be able to help these people make these phone calls to 211 and hopefully get the help that they need. I would like to just continue to ask for that Enfield consider a shelter or giving us a place that we can work towards that. And the people need to be able to sleep, they need to be able to have some food, and it's very hard for them to get the strength, then the wherewithal to go out the next day and look for housing and look for work and seek the medication or psychiatric help that they need if they haven't had a good night's sleep or that they're out in the open somewhere sleeping. So, but I think this is great. I love the idea of the help coming to them and I'm hoping that the warming center from January to March will be one of those places that they'd be willing to come in the evening and talk to people. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Appreciate it.
Do you think we could have Dawn come up and explain it so the people on TV know what we're talking about?
Dawn, would you like to come up and?
It's up to you. We do, we did actually provide a one-page overview that's up here as well. It's the same information that we gave you all. You want to come up, Damian?
Well, you got the people on TV that want to hear it.
Hello, people on TV. Hi, guys, how are you?
How you doing?
So, we actually have a one-page, and you all know Damian Humphrey, our deputy. So Damian has been living with this grant application since March. So he's done a lot of work, but we did provide a one-page overview because we thought it was really important for you all to get some information. It was the same information we gave you all in the detailed part for this month. So I'm happy to talk about it. We've got notification in March that the Department of Housing was releasing this funding. After we took a look at what we're doing for homeless services now, we had some conversations with CHR because they provide a similar service in the greater Hartford area. We thought it would be a perfect match to bring their strengths and our assets in terms of the infrastructure we provide here in Enfield to the table to serve this population. So it will be the first mobile pilot program ever run in the state of Connecticut, so we're excited about that. It does, Mayor, as you've requested us to be quite creative with our revenue generation, does provide us with some opportunity to offset staff expense and bring in some grant-related funding for mileage and other things like that. A bulk of the work will happen with CHR. They will, their plan is to hire two staff people to do the mobile diversion programs themselves, so they will be going to where folks are. We will be working with 211 as we have been for pretty much forever on all the referrals, but this would be an opportunity for folks to call into 211. And instead of going into waiting for a shelter assessment and being placed in a shelter, this would divert those calls to the CHR staff people. So what we've learned since we first came before you in March and April is that our friends at the Department of Housing are as excited about this as we are. We're just getting a lot of letters of support from the surrounding communities. They all want to be part of this activity. But, you know, as you teeter on the edge of a pilot program, they're not quite sure what reporting requirements there will be and how we're going to measure the outcome. So they are looking at this as something from the state level that could provide replication opportunities for other regions of the state, so we're also very excited about that. But it is, as you know, us going to the folks and where they are. We have worked, obviously, with a great deal with the homeless population we have here, so we're looking forward to kind of branching out a little bit. Want to add anything, Damian?
No, I think that the excitement. Hi. There is excitement from the Department of Housing and folks in Hartford who oversee homeless shelter in the region that the Town of Enfield is taking on this project. And it's really becoming, it has the potential to be, become a model of how we can serve those who are about to become homeless or in the process of getting into situations where they need support and guidance to be able to retain their home and keep the family stable, including children. We have the potential to really build something that can not only benefit Enfield, but benefit the region and ultimately the state if we do a good job, which I believe we can. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And she provided that, I think Deb had sent it out to the council, but there's also hard copies. And for those tomorrow, if you didn't receive it, we'll send it out again.
So back up for the public would like to speak on a specific public hearing, ma'am. Just name and address. Perfect. Right up there, yes. You get the front seat. Welcome.
Hi, everybody. This is my first time, so I'm a little nervous. So my name is Lisa Quatch from 4 Union Street in Enfield.
It should be on red.
There you go. So let's start over. My name is Lisa Quatch from 4 Union Street in Enfield. I actually work for Journey Home, this agency that reached out to Damian and Dawn, but I am here as a resident. So I didn't prepare any speeches because, again, I'm here as a resident. And I am very proud of Enfield for pursuing this opportunity. I know that there's a lot of talk about homelessness in Enfield. I actually participate in the pick count that we do every year as well when we go out on a night and look for unsheltered homeless population, so we do have some folks here. So I just want to highlight that diversion is the point of it is to keep you out of the system because the goal is, we don't want children and families in the shelter system because once you're in the system, it's hard to get out. Diversion can offer a lot of assistance to prevent folks from entering the system. Like if my utilities are off and I can't, you know, I don't, I can't stay there because there's no heat, diversion can help me. Diversion can also help folks who are homeless but not in shelter, who have means to get, you know, security deposit. And I know right now with the budget cuts going around, there's not a lot of assistance for those folks. And I think that we have enough folks who need the assistance for us to move forward with this. Just yesterday, I was at ShopRite and there was a family asking for money for rent. You know, he was playing the violin, panhandling, but there's more that we can do. Instead of stopping and saying, there's nothing I can do for you because we have cards that my agency produced, but it's in Hartford, no one's supposed to travel up there, there's no resources available. So having mobile diversion specialists come meet them where they're at and offer those resources, we really can end the homelessness around here if we're keeping them out of the system. So, you know, I'm going to be working with these diversion specialists because I'm putting it in the universe that they will be hired, that we will get this. I'm going to be working closely with them because I am kind of the liaison between Enfield and Hartford right now. When there's a, when there's a client who is reporting to be from Enfield, they usually ask me, do you know him? Have you seen him? Most of the time I have. And there's data that's going to be in the hard copy about how many calls came from Enfield from 211 just seeking services. But if you look at the data, there's not a lot of follow-up because there's a disconnect from Hartford to Enfield. So I think it would be really good for Enfield residents to have something of their own that they can utilize. So, thank you, everybody.
Well done. Good speech.
Thank you. It was all up top of my head. So, very genuine. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, ma'am. Sorry. Yeah, go ahead. I know someone else raised a hand, so I apologize. You're first. Go ahead. Yep, yep. Go ahead, ma'am. Sorry. Priscilla. Welcome.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Priscilla Brason. I'm a resident of Enfield since 1966. I love Enfield and I love what you folks do here to make it better. I've been with the Soup Kitchen for over 30 years. I see homeless firsthand. They come in, they come and eat. I work with them to try to find housing. This one girl, just last week, she was sleeping outside for two nights. She was terrified because the police would make her move. Guys are on the street. We really need to adopt something to help our homeless and I hope you folks can help us. God bless.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kibbe. Sorry.
Hey, guys, how are you?
Good. Welcome.
Kevin Kibbe, 20 School Street. This is something you hear a lot. We're just trying to be a little bit proactive this year with the SCANIC, specifically down by Powder Hollow. I know it's probably an issue on the whole SCANIC.
Kevin, it has to be specific on the block grant.
Oh, my bad. I wasn't listening. All right.
Sorry.
That's okay. I'll come back later.
We'll have regular public comments in about 10 minutes.
All right, my bad.
Sorry about that. Ma'am.
Hello, I'm Patricia Banning, 6 Trinity Drive, Enfield, for 46 years. I have been involved with the Warming Center in Enfield at Holy Trinity Episcopal Church. I see homeless every single night. I see them on the street and what is the most heart-wrenching to me is when we have that severe cold. These people now have faces to me. They're not just homeless. They're people and they have hopes and dreams and they're really in tough shape. And I still see them out around by the stores and whatever. But I think the education needs to be out there about our Warming Center. It's a wonderful organization. It's all volunteer, except one person. And I just would like some eyes opened. I'm excited about this new project, but we need help with where we are right now. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ma'am. Welcome.
Hello.
How you doing?
Good, and yourself?
Good.
My name is Monica Wright. I am the Director at the Enfield Safe Harbor Warming Center. And a question I have, and I want to piggyback off what Pat Banning said, is that we really need to look at those who are on the streets now. I mean, the diversion program is an excellent program because it helps people from being homeless, but we have people who are homeless right now who are calling the 211 system, who are being transferred from Enfield to Hartford, who are in need of mental health issue, who are in need of food, who are in need of other necessities. And I'm wondering if with the grant, will those needs for those who are homeless like at this minute, will they be able to find housing? One of the issues is income. Some of them do not have income. So how do we combat that? Is, would there be some kind of way where the grant could help out with that? Or it could be that people have had evictions and they're not able to find housing because now an eviction is on your record. So these are some of the questions that I'm hoping that this grant will be able to answer and also help those homeless people who are in situations such as that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this public hearing? Anyone for the second time? I'm sorry, Jack. Go ahead. Yep.
Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. My question is, how much is the grant? What do we do when the grant runs out? Once we, once we provide a service, as you guys know, can't take it away. How do you take it away? How do you stop it? I'm very concerned about that. And then we're talking about not just the homeless in Enfield, but surrounding towns? I don't know how that's going to work or, you know, but at some point, we have to be careful what we get involved in because what do we do? We're going to take that on in our budget when the, when the grant money runs out? That's my concern. Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else like to speak for the council on this public hearing for the first time? For the second ti- oh. Sorry. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Rosalind Swift. I live at 14 Gary Road, Enfield, Connecticut, here for 45-plus years, but we also have a church over in the Thompsonville section. We also have an outreach center over in the Thompsonville section and we see homelessness a lot. They may not always be counted and it's already been said, so that's why I didn't know whether, okay, I'm just going to reiterate that we do know that it is a homeless problem here in town. And I'm also the Assistant Treasurer for Enfield Safe Harbor, so we see it firsthand. And we're just hoping that we can partner together with whatever grant that we have. You know, the diversion, it sounds wonderful, but as it already been said, we have homeless people now and if we can some way partner with our Warming Center. And I also hope to see a shelter here one day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone like to speak for the first time? For the second time? Priscilla.
I also forgot to mention, Priscilla Brason.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also forgot to mention that through St. Vincent de Paul, we have what they call Crisis for the Month, and I take the book and we help people out. Sometimes we have to put them in motels that are homeless, but it's, you know, it's only a Band-Aid. It's one or two nights and that's it. And then what they do. I'm also on the Board of Directors for the Warming Center. So for the last three years, I've got to see the people that come into the Warming Center. And there are a lot of the same people that come into the Soup Kitchen. And I can attest, it's real. It's very real. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak for the second time? Third? Thank you very much. Declared as public hearing closed. Thank you. Now to the regular meeting, June 4, 2018, 7, almost 7:15. Prayer. Counselor Crissati.
Today, we have come together with the hope of creating a better Enfield for all who live in our community. We hope to represent all who have placed their trust in us with fairness and integrity. May all of our efforts be guided with wisdom, truth, and honesty as we consider each matter that is before us tonight and always act in accordance with what is best for our community and its citizens. May Enfield and all of its residents and our great country be blessed today and always.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Here.
Counselor Davis.
Here.
Counselor Denny.
Here.
Counselor Falk.
Here.
Mayor Ludwig.
Here.
Counselor Mueller.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Here.
Counselor Ungeyer.
Here.
Counselor Arnone.
Here.
Counselor Bosco.
Counselor Sacala.
Here.
There's ten members present, one is absent.
Item number four, fire evacuation. If in case of a fire, we have exit doors at the back of the building, please exit right or left orderly and go out the building or to our left, to your right. We have doors right, right there. You take your first left out downstairs, go around the stairs and straight out the building. Item five, minutes of preceding meetings. Special meeting, May 16, 2018. Do I have a motion to approve? Counselor Arnone, seconded by Counselor Denny. Any discussion on the minutes? Deletions? Hearing none by a show of hands. All those in favor? Those opposed? Any abstentions? With 10 in favor, zero against. Motion to approve special meeting, May 21, 2018. So moved by Counselor Falk, seconded by Counselor Denny. Any deletions, changes or on this minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor by a show of hands? Opposed? Any abstentions? 10 in favor, zero against. And then a regular meeting of May 21, 2018. By Counselor Mueller, seconded by Counselor Ungeyer. Any discussion on the regular minutes for the regular meeting? Hearing none by a show of hands. All those in favor? Those opposed? Abstentions? 10 in favor? Nine in favor, one abstention. Special guest we have tonight, the Joint Facilities Committee.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Randy Dagel. I'm with the Joint Facility Committee for the Town of Enfield.
Does that turn on?
How about now?
Yep.
All right. I'm Randy Dagel. I'm with the Joint Facility Committee with the Town of Enfield. Not going to allow everybody to introduce ourselves, but this is the team that we have. For one of our charges is the bringing the new JFK up to the state-of-the-art facility and hopefully having it pass for a referendum. So I'm going to let everybody introduce themselves and then we will start our presentation.
Tim Neville, Board of Ed.
Walter Cruzell, Board of Ed, Chairman.
Chris Cycley, Construction Solutions Group. I'm the owner's project manager.
Bruce Kellogg, J C J Architecture.
And Jim Hoagland, J C J Architecture.
And from the dais, you have Joe Mueller. Me, Donna Suzak, Tom Arnone, and Liz Davis. Thank you.
Floor's yours.
All right, Jim, why don't you, why don't you start? And then we're going to, each of us may jump in at different areas. This is definitely a team effort here, so.
So actually, actually, I'm going to start, I'm going to step out of the way here a little bit. So we started the process with a QBS selection process, which is quality-based selection. And the committee in Town of Enfield selected us. I'd just like to say on behalf of J C J Architecture, I express our gratitude to continue to be a partner with the Town of Enfield and the community of Enfield. I've been at J C J 32 years now and during those 32 years, we've had a constant partnership with Enfield and it's been great and we really are appreciative of you selecting us for this project. Just a quick outline of the project process so everybody knows and understands how we got to this point. We were selected and then the first thing we have done is we reviewed with the educational specifications, which the Board of Ed had gone through and they'd updated since the past projects. So we had a current set of educational specifications. And then we started to gather all the existing site and building information for the existing JFK school. We had not only J C J Architecture there, but we had a team of engineers present also that went in and looked at the facility. And because of that analysis, we started to develop a site program. And when I say site, site program develops the, how the buses circulate in and out of the site, how parents drop off, and how you keep students safe and secure in the site as it gets laid out, as well as, of course, the athletic fields that are on the site and the parking. Also, we started to develop the building. What building systems are okay to reuse? What building systems need to be replaced? How we maximize the building layout that you have there presently? What can, what is old and tired and maybe repurposed for other things or torn down? School safety and security is critical these days. J C J was part of the commission that the state established to develop the school safety and security program, which is now a requirement on all K-12 projects in the state. Maximize your reimbursement. Obviously, that's critical to the voters of the community, but it's also important for us to understand what that means. In this particular case, the state has a program called Renovate as New, which means instead of just a renovation, you're renovating the building so it's as new quality and it's good for a minimum of another 20 years. What that does is that makes a lot of items now eligible for reimbursement that perhaps otherwise would not. Evaluation of site circulation, I mentioned. Reorienting the fields. We looked at how we can make best use of the locations where the fields are. Can we reorient them so that we make, make them even better? Staying away from grading conditions, which are steep, making use of all the flat areas, et cetera. Again, the process included evaluation of building systems and optimizing use of any new systems we put in. What are the systems that give you the best value for the dollars and meet the needs? And then, of course, last and most important, this school's going to stay as an occupied facility. You have no other place to put the students. So construction has to be what we called phased construction, which means we have to be very systematic and very careful in what areas get under construction and when, what areas we can use swing space on, and we also want to maximize the summer months. So I'm going to turn it over to Jim Hoagland, our lead designer, and talk about the design and the programming.
Okay, as long, as long as this is working, I'm just going to use this one. Is it?
You might have to put it closer to you.
Use the other one.
Hear me okay now? Oh, okay. All right. Can you hear me now? All right. So as we got into this, Bruce, I think, very nicely set up all of the rules that were set forward when we came on board. There was a lot of information that was already accumulated, passed along to us, and that was really our first task was to get in, understand the building, what was there. So this is just a quick slide, given the program that we had to develop and fit within the building, as well as some of the just raw data. Proposed renovation, the school is going to eventually house 1,215 students. That's important for the state and reimbursement to tie in. So you can see the existing square footage, we're a little under 180,000 square feet currently on the site. And the plan that we've arrived at, demos, a small portion of that building, and then we're now proposing about an 18,000-square-foot addition that right sizes some of the spaces that we couldn't really take best advantage of within. So ultimately, for the building, the project that we're proposing now is a little over 191,000 square feet on that existing site. As we got into it, we realized that there was a lot of value in that existing building. There are a lot of things that were working well and almost 180,000 square feet that we felt we really, really had to best utilize. So as we got into it and conversations with the educators and the Joint Facilities Committee, we kind of arrived at this mantra that we kind of arrived at this mantra that we've taken forward as we make decisions on each and every one of the options that we evaluated, to retain, repair, replace, and obviously, we're into a renovate-as-new project, but the whole goal of this is to maximize the town's reimbursement, the money that you're going to get from the state. And that really influenced every single decision that we made as we move forward. This is just a quick aerial and overview of the existing site that I think all of you are familiar with. I don't think we have to waste too much time on this. What you see here is the proposed site renovation. And keeping that mantra in mind, our goal really was to retain as much of the existing elements as we could that made sense. So you can see off on the east side of the site, all of the existing playfields are there. So we're actually going to reorient and create accessible paths to each and every one of those fields. And we retain the same number of fields that are currently there, but we've reoriented them. The soccer fields are now reoriented in a north-south orientation. So we have two competition soccer fields. We have a full-size baseball field, full-size softball field, and two practice fields that overlap some of the other elements. The big thing here is we're taking the slope that exists there, and we're creating accessible paths from the existing parking areas. We're expanding the parking a little bit in areas that we think make sense, that could be shared by the building, the school, as well as the fields for recreational weekend use. But we're proposing accessible walks, ramps, stairs, all the way down to each and every one of those competition fields. Over on the west side, around the building, we've tried to evaluate what works best in the circulation of the vehicles that come in. There's almost 36 buses that come into this site. And right now, there's several spots on the site where those buses have to cross pedestrian traffic, parents that are coming in. There are a few conflicts. So as less intrusively as we possibly could, we tried to completely separate the bus traffic from the parent loop, and make sure that the students could come directly out of the building in a very safe manner, load onto their buses, get to their parents' car, get in, and safely on and off-site. So we've actually added about 50 parking spaces. We've eliminated the existing basketball court. Well, we've relocated the basketball court down closer to the other playfields, and we've actually eliminated the existing tennis courts out there right now. But that gave us just enough space to rework the bus loop and the parent loop to what you see here. Now, getting into the building, this is actually the existing plan. You can see the red wing, white wing, and blue wing are all two-story classroom wings. And then the wings in between house a variety of administrative offices, the existing media center, the gymnasium, the pool, the existing pool, and lockers that are associated with that, as well as the cafeteria and kitchen. So each of these wings works off in a spoke, and there's a general organization to the building that we're somewhat locked into. So once again, we had a conversation, what really works with the building, what doesn't work with the building, and how can this renovate to new, fix some of the things that aren't working right now. So the decision really was made to maintain all of the two-story classroom wings as classroom spaces, obviously fully renovate those. It would get new systems. We're moving some interior partitions a little bit. But each of those wings, as you can see here, is now going to house a sixth grade. So sixth grade will house the white wing, two stories. The red wing will house the seventh grade, blue wing the eighth grade. So we've been able to reorient all of the educational spaces and accommodate the team structure. Each of those grades has four teams, and we're able to pair up two teams on each floor, create an English classroom, math classroom, social studies, and the science, and have that team work on each floor. We've also introduced special ed spaces into each and every one of the wings, which then leaves all of those in-between spaces, the core spaces, as we like to call them, the media center, gymnasium, cafeteria. So we began an evaluation of which of those spaces really worked, where they needed to stay where they were, which ones could move and would really benefit from moving to a different part of the building. And this conversation really kind of informed where the addition ended up going. What we discovered was there was clearly a public side of the building and a more private side of the building where the students occupy every single day. So we made the decision to propose a brand-new auditorium, because right now, the auditorium is buried in the center of the spoke, you know, that wheel. Very difficult to get to. The music classrooms, there's really no clear adjacency for all those spaces that need direct access to the stage and auditorium. So what we proposed is building a brand-new auditorium and putting that over close to the gym. Highly-used community space, the community comes in, plays rec basketball games in the gym, you know, really utilized by the community. So the decision to group the new auditorium, the gymnasium together, made a lot of sense. It gave us an opportunity to create a new public lobby in that area, and really kind of create a new face for the community, for those community spaces. The other big move that we made, you can see the cafeteria is now grouped over on that side. The existing cafeteria is in a different part of the building right now. So what we've done is we've proposed moving the cafeteria over where the existing pool is. It's a big, open space. There's clear span structure there, so the two programs kind of fit very nicely. And size-wise, it was almost a perfect fit to move that cafeteria over. And it'll actually help us with some phasing issues as to how we build a new kitchen while the existing kitchen is fully up and running and functional. So every decision that we made begin to inform some of the phasing and construction that's going to happen. So I'll quickly run through.
One thing I want to do, Ed, when we were coming up with this floor plan, not only does it allow the public to be able to occupy either the auditorium, gymnasium, or calf, but it now secures the rest of the building. So no longer will the public be allowed to roam through the hallways and go in and up and down every floor. If there's an event going on in the auditorium, we could lock down the rest of the buildings. We even started getting real deep into weeds here, where we started moving around the band room and the chorus room, and we started putting dressing rooms back there, so if there was an event, the kids didn't have to come down where the public was in the middle of the hallway, then come all the way back. So they have their own private bathrooms, their own private dressing rooms. The location for the art rooms, they're studios, they're not classrooms anymore. They all have natural light in there. The wellness wing, which is now where the guidance and everything is, initially, we were going to bump those walls up, because as you guys know, there's a center hallway right now, which means the rooms on either side are 10 by 10 or 10 by 12. They're not really conducive for a teaching environment, not along the classroom. So one of the things we initially were going to do was bump the walls up. One thing I really commend J CJ, they came back and said, instead of moving the exterior walls, let's just move the interior walls. So as you can see, there's a corridor now that runs along one side, which now makes these rooms 12 by 18, 12 by 20, a lot bigger, twice the size as they were, and now they're totally functional. Every decision that was made on this floor plan was made for a specific reason. And we really, the committee really commends J CJ. There wasn't just because there was space, they put a room there, the tech ed area. Right now, as you can see, and we'll go through the tech ed deeper when we get to it, but I just wanted to, there was reasons why we did this. And like Jim said, the phasing. We could have this new auditorium up and running. We could have the gym up and running. We could have the calf up and running before we start demoing the existing. So we're not putting kids without a cafeteria or without an auditorium. The day that that one opens, we start construction on the existing. So the phasing is very important, and they have a great understanding on how to do that, which was one of the main reasons why we did hire them, for their expertise.
Thanks. Yeah, we have a number of enlarged plans that we're going to run through quickly here. This is actually a diagram of the two-story classroom wing that you can see here. I'm actually going to have Tim run through, because he's very familiar with this building, and he gave us a lot, a lot of useful input as to the function and how things have to work.
Thank you. Yeah, I have a few years there, anyway. But in terms of the classroom wings, we had some space in there that wasn't as useful. For instance, with the art spaces up there, we had a lot of other different spaces that weren't, that didn't contribute to the mission that we had as a school. In terms of, it was set up more as a junior high when it was built, as you all know, and we moved it into a middle school, but we couldn't always get our teams close together, and the team idea hasn't to do that. So in terms of the way we laid it out, we had the officers, the house offices were on the first floor, and they blocked up a lot of the end space there, and we needed that space for classrooms. So if you can look at the left-hand side there, you'll see that we moved the offices. They need to be able to look, control that hall in terms of, look down that hall and monitor that hall. Those spaces are now right up in the hub, and there's going to be a lot of glass area there that's going to allow them to basically monitor that area. That's a quick and easy place for kids to get to, to get to the offices if they need to. It's also workrooms there for the teachers to deal with in mailboxes and so on, and there's also a conference room to run meetings and so on. We're able to move the resource room back in there. Instead of taking a regular classroom space, we made the resource, they're normally going to be smaller, anyway, and we were able to find those rooms. And we were also able to find rooms for the science room, for prep rooms, and so on. Now, these rooms are labeled as eighth grade, sixth grade, and seventh grade. They don't necessarily have to be that. What we wanted to do is build them so that they could be used in case the design of a middle school changed, or we needed to make it more flexible, and the spaces allow us to do that a lot. If you move down to the next slide here, where you look at where the former auditorium was, we wanted a focal point for the building. And as you know, you've gone through Enfield High School, you went through the STEAM wing that we have there, the Fermi wing at Enfield High School, and you know that we have it all in the elementary schools as well, and we have those classes here, but they're not together, and they're not set up the way the STEAM program is. So we made that focal point basically where the auditorium was. And so they're all together, and we're hopeful to have a lot of, get rid of the dark brick that we have there, and open it up so that we have a lot of light coming in there, and a lot of color, and brighten it up, but also so that these folks can work together. And if you look around the hub, at the end of each of the classroom wings, we've got the same situation we had in the blue wing. We've got the offices, teacher workrooms, and so on. And so that whole space is wider, it's clearer, it's wide open, so that it lends itself to kids' movement around the schools, as well as supervision of youngsters while they're in the school. And looking at the next thing that Randy was talking about in terms of art, we had the art rooms up on the top floor, on the 21 rooms. Those who went to JFK know where those rooms are, and they were a bigger room, but they took up space that we needed for the teams. And we also wanted to put the art teachers together. They share a lot of stuff, they share a lot of equipment, they share a lot of supplies and so on, and we wanted to put them together, and we wanted to get them natural light while they were doing it. So if you look at those, it used to be the former black wing, or tech ed wing, we've got those folks together there, and where they can share equipment and so on, and there'll be a destination for the kids. Instead of having art in every wing, they'll have art in their own space. As you well know, that we never really had adequate music space for our kids, and we have a huge and talented music program there. And so in that same space, we put the orchestra, the choral group, and we also have the band room there, and we have no supply room right now to store the hundreds of instruments that we have there we do in this design. So what we try to do is take care of it so that they have their space, and it was dedicated space, and it met their needs right from the outset, as well as when they do go to perform on stage, all of those rooms are directly connected to the stage. There's areas, there's also bathrooms back there, too, so the kids are not going back and forth into the building. So we try to deal with a lot of needs that we have identified over the years, and I'm enthusiastic about it, because all of these things, where we used to say, I wish they had done this. We tried to do that in this design, and I think J CJ was very responsive to the questions that we had as a group.
One of the things, too, that we, lessons learned, not that we didn't provide it, but it was a bullet point that came to us early on from when we did the high school, was custodial and storage space for your equipment. Right now, they're dragging their equipment from one wing to another wing to another wing. They're spending half as much time getting to where they need to do their job than to do their job. So we provided storage and custodial closets just about in every wing, just about in every area, so you don't have to walk 15 minutes to get something and then walk another 15 minutes. Everything is going to be within each of those wings. So we're really thinking it through, just like Tim said, wish we could have done that. Well, now we have the chance. Fortunate, a lot of us have been on several committees, building committees, and we're like, remember this, remember that, and we're really doing our due diligence in making this an unbelievable 21st-century state-of-the-art facility.
Thanks. Okay, we'll keep moving along here. What you can see on this image is the grouping of all those community spaces that we're referring to, and it gives a new public face to the building, create a new public lobby that has a gathering space for both the auditorium, the gymnasium, as well as the cafeteria. There's a lot of public functions that go on in the cafeteria as well, but this whole section of the building can be easily shut off from the rest of the school. So organizationally, I think it worked out quite well by putting the new addition here. I started talking a little bit about the phasing and how these big chunks of program space were going to be moved around the building. One of the big puzzles here was, do we move the media center? Do we leave it where it is? Do we move the front door? Do we move the main admin? And ultimately, what we arrived on was the solution of leaving the media center exactly where it is. It's a standalone piece. It can operate standalone. It seems to function pretty well where it is. But by taking out all the small offices that are currently in this wing, moving some of the interior partitions, we actually were able to create spaces big enough to create a dedicated world language area. So that whole department is now together in this wing, easily accessible right off the hub, and then we leave the media center exactly the way it is, and there's a few specialists that would be located down in this area as well. The next big move phasing-wise, once we build a new cafeteria where the existing pool is, that then opens up that entire wing, that entire cafeteria, which, once again, is a large-span area. We can do kind of whatever we want in that space by building partitions. It's closest to the biggest parking lot, and everybody is somewhat familiar with coming into that area. The buses come through that area, the parent drop is in that location. So we played with the idea of moving the main entry and kind of reinventing that corner of the building. So right now, we're proposing the new main entry at where the cafeteria used to be. We'd be able to create a secure entry, a secure vestibule as you come in. There'd probably be a new canopy that would really accentuate and make it real obvious that this is the front door to the school. So the main office would be located there, the nurse would be located in that area, as well as a couple of self-contained special ed programs. And those programs need direct access to the outside sometimes, and we felt that by creating a new van loop in this area, those special ed vans could come in, drop the students directly at the self-contained classrooms, and the administration is a nice adjacency having that right there next to it as well.
One quick thing I just want to add regarding the auditorium that I failed to mention is that we're designing it for a minimum of 604 seats. So it's, and handicap accessible, 100%, so including the stage. So it's several hundred more seats than you currently have, and all these seats will be working.
So we did the plan exercise, and that worked out quite well. We arrived at the square footage target with our program. Everything seemed to match up pretty well. But I think one of the things people need to get excited about is how these spaces are going to be transformed. Any renovate-to-new project has the opportunity to be transformational. And so we've been working with the committee, and there's several spaces that I think we can look at as existing spaces and what it could be. So just running through a couple of these, you're going to see typically in the upper-left corner of these images is a picture of an existing space today in the building, and then the lower right is typically, well, it is from a J CJ project, very similar to some of the spaces that we're envisioning for the JFK end solution. So this is a cafeteria.
As you can see, the wall, right now, we have brick walls. Every room is bricked. As you can see, one thing that they're proposing is, you're still going to have that demising wall, but make it glass, make it clear. So not only visually looks twice the size, but it gives the kids the freedom of seeing and being monitored, without having to know that you're being monitored, and going open, instead of having ceiling tiles, go open, expose the mechanical system. That'll get you another three to five feet, depending upon the areas. So I love the concept of the openness that they really emphasize, that we have the potential doing.
Yep. So by improving the acoustics in that space and taking the opportunity to introduce color, new furniture, it's really an exciting opportunity. This is one of the tech spaces. It's a computer lab, an existing one. We recently completed another school where it feels very much like an Apple Store. You walk in- You walk in and the kids really connect with that. So you think about the students and their mindset and how we can create some of these spaces that can get the kids excited about going to school every single day. This is a typical science lab, this is a science lab that's existing. By introducing a little more glass, you get that natural light in, you're using different types of furniture that are more movable and flexible and agile. The rooms can begin to serve many different purposes and we find when we do this, the teachers find a lot of different ways to use and teach within those spaces. And then typical corridors, as you walk down each of these wings, there's a feel and a character to that existing space. And by introducing some clear story windows, bringing glass in, in that existing auditorium in the center of the hub, that whole auditorium pops up. We have an opportunity to introduce glass up high, which would actually bring light deep down into those corridors, which are currently feeling very dark. By introducing that natural light into the heart of the building, it's one great way to create that transformational experience. I'll let somebody else run through numbers. I don't do numbers.
All right. Chris, you want to start that?
So, as you'll see here, the total project is, I'll jump right to the big number, 84.373 million. This is significantly reduced from the last referendum and grant application that was submitted last June. The previous referendum was 96 million. So we've reduced this considerably, but we have not sacrificed any of the program needs or spaces within the building. As Jim and Randy mentioned earlier, as well as Bruce, we spent a considerable amount of time on March and April really diving into the program needs and spaces, sizes, the square footage to make sure that we had everything right before J C J went in and did their layouts to get to the point where we are today. So this does look like a large number, however, being that this is a renovate-as-new project, the town is eligible for 70.71% reimbursement from the state of Connecticut as part of this school grant application. So as you'll see, the bottom part, the state share would end up being 57 million and the town share would be a touch above 27 million. And that is again, based on this concept that we just presented to you tonight. Above the line, up top, to get to the 84 million, you'll see the hard construction cost is about 71 million. F F and E, which is furnitures, fixtures and equipment, as well as any technology equipment, we're budgeting 4.6 million-ish. And then related soft costs, design fees, permitting, testing, inspection, so on and so forth, are approximately about $8 million. That's how we get to the 84 million.
So, so now that we have the numbers and the design, the design, as you all know, can and will be tweaked if it passes the referendum. Once we start going in and determining the finishes and all along, the reason, the positive reason why we were anticipating going with a C M R, Construction Manager at Risk, opposed to design bid build where the architects draw the drawings and then it goes out the bid and the price comes in, it is what it is. Whoever we hire as a C M R works with J C J during the design of it. So any design that they do, they give an estimate. The estimate continuously rolls throughout the design. So when it's 100% design, we have a pretty darn good 99.9% chance accuracy of knowing what that's going to come in. The only surprises that we've ever encountered, that is if there's a fluctuation of steel prices. Everything else was pretty much control. One thing that we've done in the past is we break up what's called trade bids. Instead of just putting it out to the general trades, we come up with anywhere from 20 to 32, we went 36 bid packages on the high school. So we were able to really control the cost. It wasn't one contractor who had a lump sum cost to do 20 different things. Each contractor had a specific contract. So we were able to really control the cost and that's something we anticipate doing on this one too. One of the other things too, I'd like to emphasize is that every committee member, Joe, Donna, Tom, Liz, had input. All of us that are on this side as volunteers, public residents, everybody has expertise in so many areas that we were just, we are benefiting from everybody's input on it. There's not one of us that runs the show. Everybody has an input and as you can see, we've touched upon every aspect of this building. We really commend J C J. They could have just came in and said, all right, well, you had a floor plan, we could kind of do what they did. They took a brand-new sheet of paper and they started from scratch, from the ed specs. We redetermined if this program was required. We met with the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, they met with the department heads. We had the luxury of having Tim, who's been in this building for a couple of years. So we really dove from the start like it was brand-new, never seen before. And their ideas were fresh. Like I said, they didn't take one area and said, okay, well, it was already designed so we could just go with that. Every inch of this building was designed for a specific reason and to maximize the reimbursement. So as one of the committee members, I am really proud to be part of this and hopefully this can become, come to fruition. I guess at that point, that's pretty much all we have to present. If you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Counselor Stacca.
Thank you guys. I just have two questions. Well, thank you for all of your hard work. I think it looks great. Two questions. One is, did you increase the number of classrooms and if you did, by how many?
Yeah, I think the classroom number did increase. We increased the number of world language as well as the teams. And what we did was, we tried to organize the teams around a number of students that would work within that team and ensure that within the two-story wings, all the students were accommodated for. And then we introduced some additional classrooms, which I think can actually act as swing space. So there's three health classrooms that could potentially be scheduled as extra rooms. So there's some world language classrooms in its own wing. So there was a net increase in classrooms, but I think it was the reorganization of where those classrooms are that really kind of created an efficiency.
No, that's fine. I just wanted to know if you increased the amount of classrooms and if you did, by how many?
I think it was more that we repurposed classroom space that was in there and we moved walls to get, you know, some of them were too small. Like we took the administrative offices that were down in the old administration wing, we opened those up and those are four world language classrooms and they were basically department tier offices. We moved the wing over against the corridor, against the wall, so we could open up that whole space and make classrooms.
No, I saw all that. But, so, we're getting rid of the trailers, right?
Trails are gone.
Right, obviously. So, how many classrooms were added inside the building?
We did not have a course room. We did not have, so we added those kinds of rooms. It sounds like an easy question, it's not to go back into.
Right, it sounds like an easy question.
If you want, we'll go back and.
I mean, I'd like to know how many classrooms were added, to be honest.
We'll get that.
Okay. And did you increase the size of the cafeteria?
Yes.
By how much?
By almost 1,000 square feet from where it is right now.
Okay. Since I don't know, if you could give me a percentage, what would that be?
I believe it was about 5,500 square feet and it's about 6,600 square feet now.
Perfect.
Like 1/6 maybe.
Yeah, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Actually, we have a number of people who, actually, Charlotte Riley just came in and she is part of the committee too. Scott Ryder is the Board of Ed member, he is in London right now. Doug Maxell was.
He's working. He told me to make sure.
He's working, he's working, yes. And Greg Gabenow is in the audience, he's our staff person and Sue Wilson is our recording secretary. Everybody should understand that this committee has met every Thursday for over six months and they really have, you know, done due diligence on this. And some of the things that are important to me is this building will be fully air-conditioned, which we didn't mention. I mean, that's a large expense to do something like that. You know, when you're just going to take three years to do this, there's a 4% escalation on everything that gets done. We're looking at a building that the roof, last time it was done, was 1994. It's past its lifetime. So for me, I love the fact that this thing has almost the same radius that it had before. So we really haven't taken up any more space than what we had before. We have much better utilization of the building itself. And I've been really pleased with, you know, the design team and the whole committee. It's done a really, really good job. So, Tom, you had a question?
Yeah, now, just one question, some comments. So this time, we used the Q B S selection process, which is quality-based selection process, which, when you put the competition into this and you have some, you know, heavy-hitter architectural firms in the state of Connecticut, you know, all vying for this job and we're able to actually critique them through a process, a state process, which was literally a question and answer, write-down and methodically go through each architect and how everyone felt about them and then selected the one by the highest qualifications. And I tell you, when the plans came back from J C J, they were phenomenal. I mean, out of the box and so much different than the first process because they were able to reutilize space so gracefully. And especially for classroom-wise, the reason why we opened up more classrooms is the cafeteria using all the room and space in the cafeteria now for like the nurses. So it's one stop. When a parent goes in those front doors, they need not go into the rest of the school, which is a huge security issue. Another fantastic issue with this is we have the top security people on this with this architectural firm there. They know their security. So they were able to make sure that people aren't going to wander through your school and there's no need to be in the school any longer. So we're able to acquire so much more space by using that cafeteria and eliminating the pool. And that was the key to this, this whole renovation was, we did give up a pool, but we will maintain the pool at the annex now. And it's, we went through that too, which was a whole nother process. Donna and I went through scheduling. How are we going to be able to schedule a pool, a single pool? Can we do it? We can, we will, and we also have the outdoor Le Mania. So that, we remedied that issue and we think it's better education, it's better for education that we did eliminate the pool now and have less construction on the building, just that auditorium and a small bit of demo in a corner to match that building into it. Again, phenomenal architects, great out of the box, what they did to the center, when you walk in there and see that, the tech, the STEAM end of this whole educational key, it's going to be phenomenal. It's going to be something I think we're going to be proud of as well at high school. And we'll have kids that want to come to our school. So, thank you very much, everybody in the whole committee for all the work you did.
Yeah, because Gary Harrison is also part of the committee and he comes and he did, he liked the location of the auditorium being that it's not right off the street and it's not, you know, he looks at things from a different viewpoint than we do, let's have that said. But he has participated a significant number of times in the design of this building.
And one more, I actually did have a question. I know we have people waiting patiently to be next. So the renovation is the 27 million to the town of Enfield. So we all had some estimates about what it would cost us just to fix the PCB, just to fix the roofs. If we went in and went, used taxpayer money to fix this building to get it just up to code, what were the estimates? We're, I think our cost share now, we've worked it hard enough so it's below what it would cost us to repair the building.
Yeah, if we were, if we were going to do just the necessary maintenance items, it would have been, be in the roof, the windows, mechanical, not gutting it, just doing the Band-Aids for each of these things. You're around 20, you're around 37 million and out of that, you would not be reimbursed with over 80% of it because they were considered maintenance items. By classifying this as renovate-as-new, it puts it in a category where these items now become reimbursable. They're not maintenance because we're bringing it down to the structure and we're providing new electrical in the walls, where if we were just fixing the electrical panel, we weren't doing all the wiring. So at some point, that's going to fail.
The boiler. We're on a boiler and a trailer outside right now. That would not be reimbursable because it would be a maintenance issue. Now with the renovate-as-new, it's reimbursable.
A lot of items have that gray area that, since they would have been considered maintenance, the roof failures because of maintenance, it's not because of, you know, it's, we're replacing it because we want to, it's due of a maintenance.
Counselor Naga.
Hi, thank you for your presentation and all your hard work. I was just having, I have one question. How many teams will this accommodate for each grade and will it change from what it is now?
It's built to deal with 12 teams, four in each grade. There'd be three grades in there, so.
Four in each.
Two on each floor of the three classroom wings.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Crisati.
First of all, thank you for saving us $12 million with the plan. Pretty happy about that. To compare the two projects from last, last project to this project and to save us 12 million and the different design and your creative thinking, you know, I applaud that and I'm very, very pleased to hear that. I'm not overly thrilled about the pool though, personally, but I do understand from that point of view, as long as we can still have those programs for our Special Olympians. All right, so that's a project that's dear to heart. Second of all, you know, it's tearing me up. The other thing that I'm concerned about with the project, and the inside of the building is great, but the athletic fields. We have a track team. There's no plan for a track. We also have a field hockey team. There's no plan for a field hockey field. All right, you have a couple of soccer fields that are out there. Is this, when we reconstruct the fields out there, are they going to be turf fields? Is there going to be a sprinkler system that's going to be installed on the playing areas? I am concerned about that as part of your plan for the renovation of the school. If you're going to have a state-of-the-art building, let's have a state-of-the-art facilities for the whole, the whole school. Okay?
If I could respond to your question. The pool issue is, was it an issue last time as well as it is this time? One of the problems with it is, we don't, as you know, we don't, we don't teach swimming, we don't have it as part of our P E classes anymore for a lot of reasons, okay? Some of them, we had to have lifeguards and we couldn't get lifeguards, some of them had to do with the maintenance of it and some of them had to do with the, just the issue of supervision in the pool.
No, I get that.
Okay. The other part of it though, I think you have to, I need to tell you this one, is that the pool is not reimbursable, okay? That would totally come out of the town's pocket and that was a, that's a big number.
It was almost $3 million.
It had to be a total rebuild. And so, and that kind of came into the decision. Not an easy decision. I totally understand and I think we have to make sure we take care of the things you're concerned about.
Right.
In terms of the fields, you look at both turf and grass and so on, the good news is that we have sprinklers because we're going to have grass and it's a lot less expensive to deal with. And we've also, in terms of the field hockey, they've always used, you know, one of the soccer fields, we've, you know, reline them and re-strike them and so on to do that. And it's a matter of balancing out the space in there and be able to get them aligned and so on. We could certainly take one of the practice fields and reline if we had games at the same time, so that's, that's a non-issue as you know. So, but, you know, they're good questions.
But I am concerned about a track. We have a track team that have close to 100 kids that participate.
Track or cross-country?
No, both.
Both now? Okay.
Yeah. And I would like to see a track put around one of the main fields, all right, because, because what's going to happen is we're going to bus our kids to Fermi High School or to Enfield High School to use for their track meets. So if you possibly consider that.
We'll bring it back.
They have no more meets now. They have to, every meet is a wait.
And plus we, plus the, they get bused from JFK to Fermi to practice and they get bused to Enfield High School, you know, if we, if we practice up with the high school teams. So that is a concern. I do love the construction of the, you know, your plans and everything is fantastic, I just had to throw, put that in there.
I appreciate it.
Okay, but thank you.
We'll look at, we'll look into that, we'll get a cost for that.
Yeah, but, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll look into it and come up with an option, cost option.
Okay, awesome. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Counselor Falk.
I would reiterate, good job. Nice presentation. I noticed that you did away with the existing tennis courts, and I didn't know if you had done that in conjunction with Park and Rec. I, I don't actually know who used them, whether the school used them, whether the town used them, who used them, or whether there was some contact in between before you made that decision.
It's, it's not used as a, as a traditional part of the PE program. The main reason it was used when the sixth graders came over there is we didn't have enough space in the gym, so we decided to add on that cardio room as another teaching station in the gym, which removes that from the picture. The other thing is they were only be able to use in the, in the late spring and, and early fall. So you couldn't use them, you know, 12 months a year. And frankly, the, the people who are using it are mostly at night and on weekends, and it's, they're not very, very well-used. And, and a major issue was when, when J C J was looking at our traffic pattern with 36 buses, and to try to separate the kids from, the kids and the parents and the buses, there is no easy way to do it. And we looked at that slope that you saw in there. If you recall, probably about 15 years ago, that disappeared one heavy rainstorm, and the Army Corps of Engineers came in here to do it. It's huge money to try to stabilize that, to make more flat land that we can, we can move around those lots, so. We were trying to kill two birds with one stone here. We were trying to keep the kids and the parents and the buses apart. Okay, we were also trying to provide a private parking lot for parents. We always say, welcome to JFK, but we don't give you parking space. You have to kind of go between the buses to get in there to do it. And, and we, and we made that decision to move the administration to the cafeteria wing, and, and also became a security issue because people come in for four or five different reasons, and they end up going through a large part of the building when they go into the, the current administrative entrance. Right now, they're in there, they can pick up their kid at the nurse's office, drop off forms, go to guidance, go to a PPT meeting. You know, it's, some of the, the special ed junctions are in there that, that they need to be close to the nurse. We have OTPT, all in that same area. So it dealt with a lot of the needs that we have. Okay? It, you know, and I, and I think it, it just worked. And we're looking at the number of, the school is not really using the tennis courts at all.
How about the basketball courts? Are they used by the students, or is it just an after-school thing?
It's actually, it's actually both, but that's why we kept them. We just moved them closer to the back of the building instead of being off to the side of, by Luster Lane there.
Yep.
And we added, we needed the parking space. I think we had, what, 30 to 50 spaces or something over there? We, we needed that space. And anybody that's gone to park for an event there knows that it fills up pretty quickly.
So you had two before, you still have two basketball courts, and the students are using them.
Yes, the students and the public, they, it's used all, all summer. It's used for some of the summer activities for the, the camps that go there and stuff like that. Park and Rec uses them.
Sure, okay, thank you.
They're still heavily used.
And plus, by, by moving them where they are down there, it helped with the sloping of the wheelchair access and handicap access. You're not, you don't just have a bank now. By having the fields, you can slowly bring them to one level. Now they have a flat area. You bring them to another area, there's a flat area, and then by then, we have a full run that brings you all with the other fields. So you have a total ADA accessible fields now.
Good, thank you.
Under this plan.
Yep. Counselor Crissati.
Back to the cafeteria. Occupancy of the cafeteria. What, what is it now, and what is it going to be?
Yeah, I, I believe the square footage is about 5,500, so the occupancy.
400 now.
Yeah, about 400, and it's pretty tight in there. They're, yeah, stacked in there pretty tight. So I think with the extra square footage, we'll easily be, they want to run three lunch waves, so we'll easily fit the 400, and it'll just be more spacious.
Okay, so, so you'll be able to fit?
Yep. We'll, we'll run the three waves.
But you don't know what the number is?
Depends on the seating, the, the furniture we put in there.
Ultimately, the, the tables that we choose will drive the occupancy, so.
That's, that's the tweaking I was talking about. If we go with the round tables.
Round or rectangle.
Bob, I can assure you, it'd be less institutional than it is now.
Well, I hope so. That's what, that's the point that I'm trying to make. All right.
Thank you. Counselor Anger, then Counselor Cicale. Go ahead, go ahead. All right, go ahead, sorry, go ahead.
So just to follow up on that, so you're still going to have three lunch waves? And I guess my only gripe with that?
That's town-driven.
Well, no, well, it's Board of Ed-driven.
We're told what we have to design it to, and this is what the, the direction they told us that charged. So it's, it's not a, we're not debating it.
But is it going to be big enough to do two lunch waves?
No, no, it was never designed to do two lunch waves.
That was never the charge to do two. We were told minimum three lunch waves, we were told to design it for.
Hmm?
Why would you want, why would you, why would you want two? You have three grades.
So my kid wasn't eating lunch at 10:30?
Three grades, you have three waves.
10:30 lunch.
The reasoning would be, so my kid isn't eating lunch at 10:30 in the morning.
Well, something. That's Board of Ed.
It's something the Board of Ed side will look at, that's all.
Okay.
One of the issues, too, is cooking enough food and keeping it warm enough for, you know, basically 600 kids at once. That's, that's a lot of kids in there. And it's also having staff available to supervise. They're, they're real issues, but we'll, we'll bring it back to Mr. Trezick and, and his crew and get back to you.
Counselor Anger.
I can't remember. Is there a school store?
Yes.
And will there continue to be?
Yes, yep, there is currently a small one. I don't actually think it's being utilized right now. There, there was a space there. I think it's been taken over for a storage closet or something, so, yeah.
Yeah, the potential area is down by the, on one of the slides by the auditorium, it shows approximately the store location.
So you can see, in between the, the new auditorium and the existing gymnasium, right within that lobby, there's going to be a small school store right there.
Glass partition, so just like at the high school, you can walk by, you can see the apparel, and then when it's open, you go in there. So yes, we've got a stu-, a store also.
Deputy Mrs. Suzak.
I just have a question on the cafeteria with the lunch waves. Do you have breakfast at JFK?
Yes.
Yes.
You do have breakfast program there?
Yes.
Okay, then that's, because before they used to have the early lunch wave because they didn't have a breakfast program, so that's something for the Board of Ed.
So I have a couple of questions. Again, first of all, I think this is a lot more professional than when we sat here back in, in the fall. I thought that proposal, that's why I was against it, was, A, it was too expensive, and B, again, I don't think it did a very thorough job, my, just my opinion. To your point on the buses, right now it's pretty dangerous where, for the, to the tennis courts, if you're, I used to drop my kid off when I, when she was at, at middle school, and you have basically one teacher or a principal who is barely a crossguard when the buses go by and the cars are picking up. So that, that's pretty big. So the boilers, how many boilers were part of this plan? Are we getting three new boilers? So what would be the plan?
Yeah, currently, right now, there's three boilers, and.
None of them work, right?
One of them kind of works, and then you have the big temporary boiler outside, directly outside.
Right.
Part of our discussion with our mechanical engineer was, does it make sense to move that entire boiler room, do something new, and would that help with the phasing? Because of the newer technology, right now we're looking at two boilers in that same space, so it's going to take, the boilers are obviously a lot smaller today.
Right.
So we were actually able to propose leaving the boiler room exactly where it is, so that'll probably, that work will probably occur the very first summer that we're into this. Summer you don't need the boilers, we'll be able to do the switch over very quickly. So, yeah.
So the location of the school, is there any thought to solar to help with that as well?
We've had some discussions with the mechanical engineer, and that will be part of the.
Because that's, that gets a lot of sun, to your point, I'm assuming why you're going with the glass, you know, as opposed to the brick, you know, knowing the area well, and certainly solar would help in, again, with the, some of the issues we've had with the boilers.
We're looking at solar and geothermal, but at this point, it's, it's, that's really digging deep into weeds. Right now, we're programming square foot and occupancy and efficiency, but that is on our radar if this does pass to potentially have solar. New England has flat roofs.
Right.
How much better can it get to put panels on there? They, all these wings face different directions, so you're going to get it at different times of the day. Geothermal's another thing we're looking at. So we are considering, but it's budget-driven at that point. It may end up being, once it gets designed, be a change order alternate or a bid alternate.
Right.
If the money's there, it'd be considered. If not, well, at least we have a price and we know why we can't afford it.
So is there any thought? We've heard about pitched roofs as we're dealing with other schools. Is there a thought? Is it cheaper? Is it more expensive? Any, just roughly off the top of your head, I know it's not part of your design, just curious.
Right now, all, all the existing roofs, except for the media center, are flat roofs.
Yeah.
So at this point, it's not part of the plan to add pitched roofs to any of those existing structures. And since we're reusing so much of that existing, I think from a cost standpoint, it would be more decorative just to add the pitched roofs, and it would just add a tremendous amount of cost.
Okay. And, and the last design had a, had a wing that we couldn't even budget for. We, we weren't going to have, be able to budget for another team. So I'm hoping that this design does not include that. So again, part, so part of this is, you know, how do we maintain what we're spending? So part of my beef with the design before is that we added another wing that we didn't, we don't currently have in our, the education budget to staff. So I'm hoping that's not part of this as well. So just, that's a question for you.
Just in terms of, we, we planned it for 12 teams because that's what our numbers show that we're going to have.
Right.
Okay? And we maximize the space. We couldn't fit the 12 teams in there because the design of some of the rooms in there just didn't, they weren't full-sized classrooms. So by moving the administrative offices out of the bottom, we've created space. By moving the art rooms over into their own wing, we made it more beneficial for them to be together, and we created classroom space. And if you look at them, they're all identical now in terms of that, and they can, each, each academic wing can have four teams, two upstairs and two downstairs, and it just fits. And if we have to move that around, we can. There's a lot of flexibility in there because the rooms are basically the, almost the same, except for the science rooms.
Plus, we're, we're introducing a sped room in each of the wings. They're part of the curriculum, part of the population, they're not separate. They're all part of everything, and that's the direction the state and, and everybody's been trying to go for. Here, by doing just what Tim said, we were able to modify some of the rooms and move walls to accommodate that. So.
Well, I'm glad you're keeping it, because in my opinion, that's the best part of the current building. It's just my opinion. It, it allows kids to socialize in a very controlled manner, and I think that the other design, again, was going to take that away, which I couldn't support. So I'm glad you're keeping it in there, because again, at that age, it's important for those fo-, those kids to be able to socialize in a controlled manner, which the hub does. So people can make fun of the spoke, but there's the reasons why it's designed that way.
It works.
All right? Exactly right? No, I agree. So I'm going to ask a tough, I mean, I, I agree this is a very good proposal compared to last, but what is your contingency in here? The one prior was, in my opinion, ridiculous amount of contingency we had in there. So I'm going to ask you a point blank, how much contingency is in here?
So we've, we've built in escalation as part of the, the construction number. There's 4% in there a year for the next three years, so we have.
Approximately 12%.
Right, correct. And, and just pure escalation because we're, we're seeing that, and that's what we just typically carry.
So is that, is that consistent with other projects? 12% seems high.
That is consistent with the state.
Consistent with the state, right.
That's the state, and, and the projects that J C J currently and has been doing, it's a 4% we're using.
Okay.
Some, again, some areas it may go low, some may go up, but that is the, that is the delta there.
Contingency on top of that.
So again, I, I just, I appreciate your, your questions and your answers. Very professional. I know the board, the, the committee has been working every week for six months, the hardest-working committee we have, against both board and council, working with the, the folks who we're paying for, and of course, the volunteers. So again, thank you very much for your, for your time and all the work you've done so far.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. So we have, next, next extra.
Next era, is that who I said?
Next era, is that what it is?
Next era, next era.
Next era. So I apologize if I, next era?
Next era.
Next era. Thank you for being patient. Again, we appreciate you waiting in one meeting to present, so if you just name and where you work for, for the record, you have the floor. Welcome.
So I'm Jonathan Wilson. I'm a developer. I'm next to Energy Resources. We're a large utility-scale energy.
Yeah, bring them on. There you go. Sorry.
Energy developer. Is it this way?
Yeah.
Red button on?
No. There you go.
Okay. Perfect.
Good. I have a short slide deck that I'm going to plug in, and we can work through. I'm hoping just to kind of give you guys an introduction to the work we've been doing here over the last couple of years. First as Ranger Solar, and then now as Next Era Energy Resources. Give you guys kind of an update on the timeline moving forward, and talk a little bit about our community outreach and, and the benefits to Enfield of our project moving forward.
Okay? You want to?
We do it from the presentation.
He's got a slide deck, yep.
Oh.
Not sure you want to show us that tax increment thing there.
Oh, that's, that's on you guys. I'm sure I have things I don't want to show you on here.
Yep.
Great. Great. Oops, sorry. Thanks, Doc. So, yeah, just a quick overview. I just want to give you an idea of who we are as a company, why we're here in Enfield, both project-specific, but, you know, how we hope to be community members long-term. Tell you a little bit about our engagement, and then field questions from, from any of you who haven't spoken with us before. So first, I want to leave you guys with a couple key takeaways. Unlike some other developers in the area, Next Era has taken a real, what we think is a real community-first approach to solar development here in Connecticut and the region. As part of that, we've, we've done significant community outreach here in Enfield around this project, hosting multiple meetings both onsite and here actually in this building since early 2017. We've met with different departments here in town as well to try to field any questions make sure that this is really the best project we can develop for this specific location. We think that this is going to really have significant positive economic benefits for the town of Enfield. You know, right now, we estimate that in year one of the project, this project should generate about $700,000 in new tax revenue for Enfield, and additional revenue for the Hazardville Fire Department that's not included in that $700,000 number. We will be interested in working with you guys in the finance department, Mr. Dixon, on a pilot agreement, a payment in lieu of taxes that kind of stabilizes our tax payments over the 20-year term of our power purchase agreement, which we will talk about. That's, we think, beneficial for both sides to kind of just get a, protect you guys from depreciation and levelize our tax liability. These projects during construction do generate quite a few jobs in the community and long-term. There's about four long-term kind of maintenance jobs for the facility as well. We also want to invite you guys to stay engaged with us. We've joined the Chamber of Commerce, and we plan to be long-term community members here in Enfield, and are always happy to be active community members and support you guys, and support local development efforts in any way we possibly can. So first, Next Era Energy Resources is a Fortune 200 energy company. We're one of the best-performing utility companies in the world. We have assets in over 30 states at this point, and multiple provinces in Canada. We're located in West Palm Beach, Florida. We own Florida Power and Light. We are the utility there in Florida, but we own, we're the largest owner of solar and wind assets in at least the United States, and I think in the world. And so, we have a lot of experience in this marketplace, owning wind and especially solar assets across the country. We, here in Connecticut, we have an expanding presence. A couple of years ago, I was part of the Ranger Solar team that initially conceptualized this project. We were acquired by Next Era Energy Resources, and a bunch of our team members came over in that acquisition. We have three projects here in Connecticut, two in eastern Connecticut, along the, kind of near the Quinnebog River in Brooklyn, Canterbury, and Plainfield. They're all similarly sized. Our Quinnebog project in Brooklyn and Canterbury is our largest at 50 megawatts, which is about two and a half times the size of this project. And our Plainfield project in Constitution Solar is the same size as this one here. We were selected in 2016 by CT Deep as part of their small-scale renewable resources, RFP, to deliver power to the Connecticut utilities to help the state meet its renewable portfolio standards. So all the power and renewable energy credits from this project will be sold here in-state to in-state utilities and benefit Connecticut ratepayers. All of these projects, we plan to have online and in operation by the end of 2020. Our construction phase of this project will take a few months, six to eight during 2020. I'll breeze through some of this, but we were initially attracted to a site here in Enfield because of the substation on Bailey Road, Skidico Substation. Solar developers like us look for existing utility-scale transmission-level infrastructure to build to, as close as possible to. And so, we were able to find right around 200 acres directly adjacent to existing utility infrastructure to build our project. That's good for ratepayers and also good from a planning perspective, so there's no long transmission lines associated with our projects. The area, we also want to ensure that we aren't disturbing sensitive natural resource areas. This project will have no impact to wetlands. We do extensive environmental surveys to ensure that, you know, we minimize all of our environmental impacts. And all that work is supervised by CT Deep. So we've held several meetings here in town. I've never directly addressed the council, but I do see some familiar faces up there that are familiar with our presentations. A lot of this is repeat information for you. But, you know, I think our biggest and most successful event was our Butter Open House in early August, where we brought, we sent out invites to all of the neighbors to the project. I think there's about 50 households that are neighbors. We sent invites out to all of them and hosted them onsite to take a look at the project, to introduce ourselves and our company, and to take any questions or concerns. We had over 50 people attend that meeting and got a lot of good feedback and contact information for the neighbors in the area, and we were able to begin kind of following up on some of the concerns that were expressed at that time. We gave a formal presentation in this room just a week later to members of different committees and to the general public, and were again able to integrate that feedback into our site design and efforts. We held another open house later in September. Again, a lot of the same information, just making sure we touch base and provide updates. At that point, we had a revised site plan that we brought based on some of the concerns that were brought up. We then tried to engage really directly with like Representative Carol Hall, who is concerned with some of the areas of the project and had fielded neighbor concerns. She hosted a community forum here in February to again listen to concerns with the project and with state policy, and we were able to again follow up on those concerns, any concerns expressed there. So overall, like I said, I think there's about 50 different households that actually abut this project area, mainly along Bailey Road, and for a while on Taft Lane, which is a residential street on the western side of the project area. So what you're seeing now is kind of our original solar design for this area. It was initially conceptualized kind of on both sides of Broadbrook Road. This area, especially Array One, there was a lot of community concerns with how close that was to residential areas. We tried our best to kind of address that. We moved tobacco barns to help ease some of those visual concerns, but eventually just, it became clear that if we dropped Array One and decided to not move forward with it, it would eliminate our need to cross Broadbrook Road with electrical infrastructure. There's the railroad there, a natural gas pipeline, and obviously Broadbrook Road that we would have to navigate. By dropping that, we saved some of the best agricultural soils on the site actually from being impacted. We set back far off of most of the residential areas, and feel we have a much better design. So our current design looks like this. As you can see, all of the area on the west side of Broadbrook Road has been dropped, mainly due to neighbor concerns. And we are working with really two families at this point to ensure that our landscape mitigation plan and our landscaping addresses to the extent feasible the aesthetic concerns of the array. And so, what we are doing now, and we will continue to work with those households, is bulking up and really specifically focusing on areas kind of in the central area of what you're seeing as Array One, near the northern portion of Charlie Road, where the intersection is, and then a little farther south on Charlie Road next to the Durfee residence. We want to bulk up our aesthetic mitigation there, and hopefully set back even further from its property. We're trying to acquire a very small piece of land that's owned by Eversource right now to increase those setbacks further. We just, we just need to do a little bit more engagement with them to make sure that happens. So we feel that this design is much stronger than what we initially came in with. We hope it kind of shows that we've done more than just pay lip service to our community involvement. We've tried to the extent feasible to address all of the unique concerns of the neighbors nearby. And as I said, there was initially 50 households that are abutters to this project, and I think right now, we're working with the concerns of two or three households moving forward. We've gone through a lot of this, but you know, we think, you know, this $30 million in new capital investment here in Enfield, you know, should be really beneficial to you guys from a tax-based perspective and a jobs perspective, and just long-term as community partners. We hold events, we will, you know, sponsor different community groups in the area. Whatever you guys need, we will, we will try to be good community members long-term. Over the next few months, we plan to file a petition for a declaratory ruling with the Connecticut Siting Council. In probably July at this point, we're wrapping up some final rare threatened endangered species surveys, mainly around a spade-footed toad that may or may not be found out there. And so, we currently have teams out there that takes really special conditions to be able to find the toad. So we're doing those surveys in the next month or two. And once we complete those surveys, we will be pretty much ready to file our petition once we have a final site design. So we need to communicate a little bit more with the neighbors as well to ensure that that's, to ensure that we're ready. Probably July at this point is when we will file. We expect to begin construction in the first quarter of 2020. At this point, we will do tree clearing mainly at that point. The CT Deep has a lot of concerns with stormwater from developments like this, and so a lot of seasonal clearing restrictions will be in place and stabilization of soil to ensure that, that we don't, we don't create any issues with stormwater sediment impacts. That's, that's the quick rundown of it.
Thank you.
We'll open it up to questions.
Counselor, no.
So Connecticut has probably some of the highest utility rates in the country. What's this going to do for us?
What solar really does in this, as a New England ratepayer myself, solar adds fuel diversity. It's a hedge against natural gas prices or against future retirements in our baseload generation fleet. I don't know if you guys are following, you know, some of the issues around the Millstone Nuclear Plant. You know, the New England region is facing a lot of retirements in the early 2020s, and we need new resources for power. So this is, this is a stabilizing force.
To stabilize it.
Yep. Also, at this scale, you know, 20 megawatts, this would be one of the largest projects or solar facilities in New England. We capture economies of scale that smaller projects do not. We're cost-competitive with pretty much anything in the market at this point.
So I'd also heard too that, I think it was 280 acres is going to conservation on the other side too, from the property owners. So it's almost split from what you're going, you are going to be using for property and what's going to go into conservation to the state.
Sure, and those are separate deals. So the Jarmack family chose to put land into conservation completely separate from their agreements with us, and so it's different parcels, and I'm not really privy to the deal. This should be about 196 acres total that we have under option. We'll be building on just under 100 acres total of it. And there's a couple of different landowners involved in that.
So you know, I travel all over New England, and you know, some of the biggest shocks going to Cape Cod and seeing a wind turbine as you, as you come up over by the Christmas tree shops there, and you, it hits you in the face, and you really have to start adjusting, thinking of, you know, the freedom that we're trying to get from foreign oil and coal-burning plants in this country. And you know, sometimes these, these projects, we have to, you know, we have to look for the bigger, the bigger cash out in this, and that's our future and our children's future. So I think Enfield's always lacked in a lot of solar panels here, and we've even had difficulties with our own residential solar. So you know, I'm happy and a little concerned at the same time that these are coming to Enfield, and I just hope that you stress to, you know, going around making sure that all our residents in the area are taken care of and what they need to make sure their property values stay the way they are.
Sure, we're definitely trying, and it is in adjustment in values. It's one that's happening all over the region. There's a lot of this in Massachusetts and Vermont, and it eventually kind of just blends into the scenery, and we think our aesthetic mitigation plan handles a lot of it.
Deputy Mayor Suzak, then Counselor Denny.
I get your utility, correct?
Yes, we're on the development side, but we also own a utility.
Right, so I hear the word, and I ever hear the word pilot, I always have fear that I'm not going to get my money, because it's always-
It's the complete opposite of what you said in your presentation. The town doesn't get its pilot money as consistently as you would like to think we do.
Right, we don't. Are we going to get our pilot money from you, or is the state going to be in charge of this money that's paid for the solar?
I'm going to answer that, I'm going to answer that same question after-
It's a really good question, right? Ed's smiling over here.
Could I just tell you that this, that part of the deal really bothers me? It almost makes me want to say, "No, thanks." Because all you have to do is go take a look at the prisons and how we've gotten nailed with pilot money, so to speak? But go ahead, sorry, I'll let you respond.
I actually, I might not be able to address that. This is the first actual concern I've heard with the pilot agreement.
Well, it's the first time I've actually, because the question's been in my mind, but it's the first time I've actually heard the term pilot being associated with the potential tax revenues that we would have. And I'll tell you, the minute all of us up here, we hear that word, we're scared.
I have to admit, my, my thought process changed, but I won't speak for Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Is there someone else that can answer that that's with you tonight?
Maybe I'll deflect.
Deflect.
We're happy to follow up with any concerns.
That's a big follow-up, but I want to go to Counselor Denny. I apologize, I stepped in.
And I have one more question.
Go ahead.
And then I'll yield, I'll yield the floor to you after I have this one.
Okay, so is it not a pilot?
I apologize, Counselor.
No, it's not a problem. You got another question, Donna?
Yeah, I do, I have one more question.
Okay. That was, I think that was a lingo issue for me, who operates in multiple states, where in some states it is a pilot agreement, but it's a tax stabilization agreement that we will execute directly between us and the town.
Okay.
And that's what we, we have examples of that, actually, of one that we've done in, for our Quinnebog project, that we can provide, and I think we've provided actually an example to Mr. Dixon, who's seen it. So this is the first time I've heard concerns of that, and that may have been my fault, misnomer.
It was the word you, it was the word you used, and-
Be careful.
Yeah, so the state should be realizing that when we hear that word, we're not happy.
Yeah.
Okay, and I have just one more question. When you install these, I actually went to a seminar on agger-driven piles. Are these on agger-driven piles, or are they on regular concrete spread footings?
Nope, they're just, they're just driven piles.
They're perfect. That's what I'm looking for. They're driven piles, okay.
Yep, was there a specific concern?
Well, no, it's just if you put them on piles, there's less disturbance to the area, and when you, when, if it doesn't go beyond the 20 years and you remove it, those agger piles come right up.
Yep, yep, no, these will be, we do, we're doing advanced geo, it's called geotech, where we'll, we'll look to make sure all the bedrock and stuff can do that, and then we'll just drill piles six to eight feet down into the ground.
Perfect, thank you.
Counselor Denny, thank you for being patient.
I don't know if anybody asked you this question. 20 years is probably the life expectancy of these panels, or around that time?
We estimate 25 to 30 years. We have a 20-year stable power purchase agreement with the Connecticut utilities. Once that expires, we can either remove the facility or re-license it and continue to operate.
Well, I guess that's my question, that was my question. Once these panels are, their life expectancy is over, are we left with the junk, or you're taking it all out, or you're replacing them with new panels?
So we place a bond or a letter of credit, there's some form of financial security that's part of our permitting process with the Connecticut Siting Council. So that'll be, that'll be placed, I think, at construction to cover the restoration obligations. We also have restoration obligations built into our lease agreements with our landowners that at the end of the project's life, we have to take out the facilities. So there isn't a situation where abandonment becomes an issue here.
Okay, I guess you answered my question, thank you.
Counselor Falk?
This land is currently zone-residential, and it's farm, so it's taxed as a farm. But what you're doing is an industrial use. Even though it technically will still be a residential zone, are we taxing it as an industrial use? Because that's worth more than farm taxes.
Sure. Does, it's more of like a utility use. I don't know if those are treated the same under your, under your zoning ordinance, if utility property is considered industrial. But no, it won't be, it won't be taxed the same as residential property or agricultural property. I need to get Mr. Dixon actually, actually a list of the parcels that we will be purchasing so that your finance side can do some of those analysis of what the adjustment would be to the taxable value of that underlying property.
I just want to be very clear that the fact that if you're putting in industrial use in, we need to tax it as an industrial use and not an agricultural use. The next question is, and I had this discussion with you guys when you did the open house, all along Broadbrook Road. Are you putting in a tree line, like arborvitae, so I don't have to look at these solar panels when I drive by there?
Yes, we are. So as, as you can see here, it's not, it's not shown, because what we're specifically showing on here is the area around the homes. But there will be lines first, there'll be arborvitae, but there will also be other plant species intermingled. There'll be kind of multiple layers of landscaping placed along the fence line.
I assume you have to put up some sort of a chain link fence anyway to keep people out, or animals out, or whatever.
Yep, well, we're going to do, based on feedback from the community, we're going to try to go with a more agricultural fence, probably a wooden fence post and like a wider gauge black fencing. And I think, I forget what the actual clearance would be, if it's like six inches or a foot at the bottom of the fence, so that small animals like rabbits and stuff can still traverse. So it won't even be a traditional chain link fence along the roadway. On the backside, on the east side of Array Two, and areas that are not aesthetic concerns, will be a traditional black chain link fence.
But you are putting arborvitae or blocking type vegetation, so we don't have to see this. We won't even know it's there.
Yeah, and I'm sure there will be visibility, especially in like year one, as the arborvitae grows, but there will be, yeah, a hedge draw along the entire array.
Okay.
In some areas, that'll be thicker, especially where there's homes with views.
Okay, thank you.
I suppose, I know you've made an effort to work with the residents, so we appreciate that. I really do. And again, I hate to be someone who sounds negative, but I at least get why you go through, you went through the Siting Council as opposed to going through our local regulations. Let's be frank, I mean, before we talk, when you talk about stabilization funds, whatever, we want that taxed, to Counselor Falk's point, where it really should be taxed. You know, again, it's not a residential use, and we're not, I can tell you personally, I'm going to say this right now, we're not, I'm not going to agree to any kind of stabilization fund at a residential rate. I want to be frank, so you guys go back and do what you need to do, because then we lose tax revenue. And I, and again, what would make me feel better is when you're talking about these AD jobs, that hopefully they're, you know, maybe focused on local folks from around Enfield and the area who you're hiring for those jobs. I'm not saying you have to, but that's going to be part of that, any kind of agreement. I want to see local folks, especially if we're going to lose out on revenue because it's not industrial zone, which you would have had to do- I'm just going to say this right now, I'm not going to agree to any kind of stabilization fund at a residential rate. I want to be frank, so you guys go back and do what you need to do because then we lose tax revenue. And again, what would make me feel better is when you're talking about these AD jobs that hopefully they're, you know, maybe focused on local folks from around Enfield and the area who you're hiring for those jobs. I'm not saying you have to, but that's going to be part of that, any kind of agreement. I want to see local folks, especially if we're going to lose out on revenue because it's not industrial zone, which you would have had to do if you went through our planning and zoning. That's all I'm saying, I want to be frank. We welcome you as a partner, we look forward to working with you, but again, we have to protect the taxpayers of this town.
Sure. Now, the majority of our tax liability is really on the improvements that we're installing rather than the underlying land, but we've always planned for this to get taxed.
I just say, that's just keep that in mind when you go back to do your financial agreements when we sit and talk.
Definitely. And we are, I've already engaged, we've joined the local Chamber of Commerce and we've talked to them actually about what we will probably do, really starting this summer, is I'll start giving presentations about the project, about what we will probably need for contractors as we approach construction. And then, once we're in the months leading up to construction, they'll probably help us host a job fair.
Good, because I can tell you we have some very talented folks who did a lot of work around here.
Yeah.
Thank you. Sorry, Counselor.
Yeah, one more thing too. On your note, as a matter of fact, as a utility, if you're going to be getting taxed under a utility, Connecticut Waters are top, one of our top five taxpayers, so a utility rate is good. So I'm excited to see those numbers.
Yeah, sure, and actually, our estimated internal NEXTARA numbers seem to be a little bit higher than what Mr. Dixon was actually planning for our facility, so we just actually need to nail down exactly what that total tax liability is, but they're healthy.
Yep. Sorry. Counselor Davis, then Counselor Crisati.
First off, I'd like to say thank you. And all I hear from residents throughout the town is, "Why isn't this already in? Are you having issues?" And they want it installed and they want to see it because it's revenue coming in that offsets their taxes. So I just want to let you know what I'm hearing from the residents and I think it's great for Enfield to finally have it. And when you mentioned the Palm Springs, I remember driving, that was miles and miles, nothing's blocked, and I thought it was the coolest thing to see, just thousands of these giant windmills when we drove down that road. And the same with when you go to the Cape. I mean, we want, I love seeing that, it's showing the future and we're behind it in Enfield, so I can't wait to see you here and start the project and thank you for all that you're doing because it's about time we move Enfield, you know, into the future instead of keeping us behind other towns and states, so thank you.
Counselor Crisati.
Okay. I think I've been to every one of your presentations, I've been to the open house. Can't wait for your final site design, you know, and your application going July. I think this is great for our town. Everybody's afraid of change and this is a good thing, tax stabilization. It's a win for our town and we're looking forward to getting this project going, you know. Once again, as Counselor Davis said, you know, why is it taking so long here? It's been over a year, maybe well over a year that, you know, this has been put into everybody's mind. So I can't wait for this project to get going. This is going to be a good thing for our town, it's going to generate some tax revenue and so keep doing all the things that you need to do to get this project moving forward.
Right, we're getting close.
Must be the Kennedy lawyers that are slowing you down here.
Yeah, no, we are very close. A lot of the delay has been around some of these community efforts and making sure our site design is as best as it could be before that. But, you know, it is good to hear, you know, support and positive feedback from the council and we do hope that as we enter permitting, you guys will be willing to consider a formal letter of support or some other, you know, vocal support for our project as we enter that Siting Council process. That's something we've done in eastern Connecticut and we hope to replicate for all of our sites.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you. We ask folks, first time up is for five minutes and if you have any subsequent chances to come up will be for three minutes. We have public communications for an hour, so it'll be, if we don't get everything done by 10:00 to 10:00, we'll have to wait till the end. Name and address.
Been here before, been a while. Doug Finger, 44 Buchanan Road. First thing is, I think I need to look at the agenda before I come to speak. It's a long night, I should be in bed about 45 minutes ago. Second thing is, again, on my list is, on Post Office Road, going east from Route Five, just before they finish that nice area right in front of Stowe, with that brand-new house on the right, they cut across the road, did it either sewer connection or water connection. When are they going to patch that? I can't get my Harley over there more than three miles an hour and I want that patched. It should be patched, but it's been a couple of weeks since it's been cut. All right. Actually, two cuts, exactly, yeah.
There's one that goes halfway, right?
Yeah. It's, needs to be patched. It rocks in there and it's just, it's bad. I'm here because I'm also the president of Local 1029, which everybody on the board knows who I am. We are emergency dispatchers, custodians, librarians, Department of Public Works, and I got some concerns about your recent budget. There was five positions not filled versus a not funded. Two custodians and three out of B&amp;G. I don't get it plus the overtime that's cut. So I understand we have to do more with less, but I don't understand the not filling of these positions. The two custodians, you know, they're basically out of Enfield High as we are short, so you're creating a lot more overtime. You're not cutting overtime there. There's a lot of functions that happen there and there's a lot of places to clean there. They're just doing trash and dash, so that just means they do the trash, quick sweep and they're gone. I think those positions are important, I think they need to be funded. I have one electrician on board right now who's doing three different jobs. He's doing his own, he's doing the job of the second electrician that we don't have, he's also doing HVAC that we don't have. He's getting tired and he's just not happy about it and neither are we. And I don't understand why we didn't fund that HVAC position. I don't know if you were aware of that or not, our previous manager didn't tell you about one of the five positions, but I have 29 buildings in this town that daily we get requests for heat, air conditioning, both. And there's a lot of work that we got to do, there's a lot of old systems in this town that everybody's aware of that we have to take care of. And I do know that when we have contracted, a lot of those work out, which I was also cut, some of that funds was also cut for that. We hire like a company like Air Temp, they're at 72 bucks an hour. All right, that's just, that's just an hour and plus there's a cost for emergency calls and I can't even get them to come out within a couple of days. That HVAC person is very important to this town, very important. The wage we got now with them, it's, forgive me, I lost my glasses, it's 43.89 an hour and that includes benefits. There's a $30 difference. If we want to save money, we need to get this position funded. If we want our buildings running right, we need to negotiate, which I thought we were going to, was the process of talking between the union and our management, your management, about raising the fees for trying to get a qualified HVAC person in because we can't hire anybody. We've had a couple of interviews, we've had two people apply, let me speak of rightness thing. We've had two people apply and they're great people, but they were more like a home HVAC person. They weren't commercialized, they didn't have 15 years in the business, they didn't have 20 years in the business. And there's one person who did, when he was offered a job, he says, "I'm making 40 bucks an hour, I'm not going to come here for 20." You know, that's just ridiculous. So if you fund it, I'd like to see these two positions funded so we can be competitive. You know, I know that you guys were, and I understand, I've been around for a long time. I've been an officer of this union since 1999, mostly the president of this union. I see a lot of you everywhere, I talk to a lot of you all the time, but I just don't understand why we didn't fund some of these important positions and come after other concessions. All right, you've got five people out of my union and as far as I'm concerned, if you're not going to fund them, those are your concessions. I'm not trying to be mean or cruel, but we need these people. We need them, you need them. Because when you walk in the Enfield High, you know, you hear or somewhere else, there's complaints about the cleaning, it's not being done right, you know, and we can't get people to mow our glass.
Sorry, 30 seconds.
Thanks. You know, we just need to make sure that we have these people on board. So please reconsider what you've done or haven't done or didn't know what you're doing. Again, I don't mean that in a mean way, I just mean that we need to have these positions filled. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good night.
Steve.
Over the last several decades, I would estimate that this town has spent over a million dollars on consultants, creating new ideas to encourage developers and businesses to invest in Thompsonville. Recent concepts include transit-oriented development, tax incremental financing, credit enhancement agreements, and again, proposed zoning changes. The future will determine whether these concepts will be successful or not. Thompsonville has seen limited investment with some development in businesses, but many of those businesses have since come and gone. One business that has committed to stay, evidenced by investing approximately $250,000, not with community development block grant or micro loans, but with their own money, should be praised. Instead, they are threatened with fines of $150 a day and possible criminal charges for a minor zoning violation that has absolutely nothing to do with public health or safety. I'm talking about Enfield Pizza. That was unsuccessful, being granted a variance required by the town to use a section of their property located in the right front corner of their building. For those believing the zoning regulations are just being enforced and no exceptions can be made would be extremely naive. This situation should never have required the necessity for variance, rather it should have been resolved at a departmental level. The zoning enforcement officer has prosecutorial discretion, meaning he can enforce or not. This should have been one where no enforcement action was taken. I can think of three other properties in Thompsonville Village Center Zone with a similar situation, parking located in front of the building, between the building and the road. I haven't heard any concerns being raised about them and one of them is owned by the town of Enfield. The quickest and easiest remedy for all parties involved is to leave, is to have the no parking signs removed from their property and allow the space to be utilized to improve the efficiency of their business. Further, thank them for their investment in Thompsonville, not threatened with fines and possible criminal prosecution for such a minor infraction that can be overlooked as it already has with other properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, appreciate it. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Jack.
Jack Sheridan, 70 Cannon Road. I'll be here a while, I've got a lot of notes. And I agree with Steve on the, on what he just said. I can't believe when I read in the paper about, here's a guy that everybody's worried about revitalizing Thompsonville, here's a guy that's definitely involved in Thompsonville and we're giving him negative feedback, it's ridiculous. And I had written originally the Honeywell contract and I had asked a while back about what the status was of the savings, I haven't heard anything, but they're talking about having more AC and guys working. Why? We get this new modern equipment that we're not supposed to need that. And then I asked about the $36 million for the Water Pollution Authority, the money we got from federal and state and why we had to add $1.5 million out of our budget for, I'd still like to know that. And then the school thing tonight, they talked about the remediation, or I mean, the renewal, renew as, renovate as new. They didn't talk about the PCBs, we've already spent money locking in the PCBs and now we're going to disturb the building and have to do more because that's what the original report said. And then, the most elusive question or answer was from Gina when she asked the question about how many rooms there are. You can't get anybody in this town to tell you how many rooms there are in a school. That's a flux. It's like, "Oh, wait a minute, we're using that for storage, so it's not a classroom." Well, it was a classroom and that's what we paid for, but you'll never get a straight answer from them. I'll tell you, 36 classrooms was in their report, right? 36 classrooms, 12 science spaces and 10 special ed rooms. Okay, that's what was in their report, but they don't want to tell you that because it doesn't, doesn't match their numbers. And then, they talk about world language and they showed, it was either four or five world language classrooms. What's the world language? English? How many world language teachers do we have and how many do they intend to hire to fill those rooms? So now, you know, I remember when we got all this new computer equipment in the schools, we said, "Wait a minute." Why, we had one person I remember that wanted to take, I don't even remember the language, I think it was Latin actually. And they said, "Wait a minute, they're the only person in the school that wanted to take Latin, so we're going to hire a Latin teacher? We've got computers, we can go online and do that. We don't need to hire or have special classrooms for world language." So, and then they didn't talk about the debt service on what they were talking about. And, you know, I don't know, they talk about how much they cut out of it, what'd they say, about $12 million? That's still a lot of money. And then the state taxes, they don't talk about how much, you know, you talk about getting the money from the state, the state's broke. We had trouble collecting our regular revenue from the state, so now we're expecting the state to give us this kind of money? It just doesn't, it doesn't add up to me. It did have a robotics room in there too, I don't know if you noticed it, but the robotics room, you know, the reason they had robotics over at Fermi was because they said they didn't allocate enough space in Enfield High because the state wouldn't pay for a robotics room. So now, is the state going to pay for a robotics room here? I don't know, the stories don't match. Oh, and then the placement of the air conditioner, it's going to be fully air-conditioned? They didn't talk about the placement of the air conditioners and are they, okay, the air conditioner at the police station was a custom air conditioner, please. I don't care, first of all, the voters aren't going to go for this anyway, but if you're going to air-condition the thing, then don't get a custom-made air conditioner that only fits that application. Because when it goes at the police station, which how many times we've had trouble with that thing, we had to hire a helicopter and wait 22 weeks for the thing to be built? I hear the noise, thank you.
Thanks, Jack. Bob.
I guess Jack and I are going to tag team, we've got an hour's worth of presentation. Bob T. Katz, Woodgate Circle. Just to let you know, JFK was built with 62 classrooms. Somehow, many classrooms have disappeared. We could put a track in those classrooms, Bob. But, the article I gave you about shaky office, that article appeared 1965, coming election of the second election of town council. And it only appeared in East Hartford and the Gazette and the Farmington Valley newspaper and it was very eye-opening. They predicted they were going to go through a lot of town managers because Enfield is a very volatile political town. And that was their prediction. Well, they were absolutely right. Well, they were absolutely right. We've, we've had more town managers than mayors. And then I started thinking about the interim managers. There's three interim managers right there, plus the one from Hartford, and there was many, many between the managers that either got shipped out like Shanley, got fired and got shipped out to Manchester. Manchester is booming. He turned that city around. He's the guy who should be sitting in that seat today. Instead of the fastest-growing town in 1965, we're one of the fastest-declining towns. And as I said before, renovate the new is an oxymoron. We had a bid in the facilities for $15 million. You had $5 million for incidentals. We should be at $20 million. Even if we had to pay $15 million out of our pocket, it'd be a lot less debt service. The debt service looks like it's going to equal the $27 million, the way we're going. And that's, and how, how many mills is that going to add in the next budget? East Hampton, they're going to build a brand-new K-8 school, $100 million for 1,000 students. But what they're doing is they're going to demolish their middle school, they're going to demolish an elementary school, and they're going to demolish another building. Demolition costs are high, because you have to recycle. So, they're doing this for a lot less than what we're doing. Middletown, referendum approved the new middle school. State says, we're not going to fund it now. So they're stuck. Hotel Sonesta renovated the whole hotel for apartments, mid-$20 million range, huge hotel. How come everybody's doing it for less money than Enfield? We must be on the sucker list for contractors. We've got to be downsizing the town, we're going to be down. In fact, the mill rate is going up, instead of the 24 population decline, it's moving into the 2030, 2035. We're accelerating the decline of Enfield. So you should be considering what wing you should be closing at JFK. Improve the fields, improve the grounds, put a track in, make the school a viable place, but renovate. I haven't heard anything about the energy savings that we're going, all this millions of dollars are going to save for energy. It looks like we're going to be spending more for energy now. I gave you an example of the high school, $100,000 more a year, with all the energy-saving lights and everything that was put in. The other thing I wondered, what, the facility committee hasn't come up with the operating cost of each buildings. Nobody's thinking about selling Fermi in Hazerville. A real estate company is selling the old Hazerville School, Elementary School, for $339,000. They got it on the market, it was advertised last week. Where's our, where's our for-sale signs from the different real estate companies for all our buildings that we don't need or use? I talked about the debt service, JFK. They're talking about 1,215 students. Believe me, you're going to have 900 students in there. You should be building it for 900 students, not 1,200 students. Those are fraudulent enrollment projections.
30 seconds, Bob.
And I intend to go to the state at the bond hearing and discuss that. Because they're fraudulent, and if you go under fraudulent means, you're getting fraudulent money, and you're misstating to the state of Connecticut that you need this money, and that's criminal. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for the council? For the first time? For the second time? 3 minutes, Jack. Chris.
It'll be quicker than that. All my hands scratching here, I missed a couple of points. One, Donnie, it's a good question about the pilot program, but that's what they called the block grant thing for the homeless, that was a pilot program. And the other thing is that the solar, I'm still wondering why we're not putting it on prison property. Thank you.
Bob?
Yeah. Yeah. It's actually a good question. You know why we're not putting it on prison property?
Bob T. Katz, again, I'm going to talk about middle schools.
Yeah, I know.
There's a movement across the country to eliminate middle schools. Longmeadow's got a major problem, they've got two middle schools, three elementary schools. The middle schools are in terrible shape, they need roofs and everything. They're talking, the Board of Education's talking about eliminating the middle schools, adding wings onto the K-8 schools, and go through a K-8 concept. If you go online and look at the K-8 concept, that fits the millenniums today. The baby boomers, the middle school fits. It's an outdated concept. K-8 is where everybody's going in the United States, and why do we stick in with old techno? We're talking about old technology. We want to bring our schools up to a state-of-the-art. The elementary schools are in terrible shape. Hazerville Memorial is built in 1951, Enfield Street in 1954. We've got to put the money into our elementary schools. That's where it starts. Because if you don't start in the elementary schools, the kids are gone by 5th grade. And that, all the studies have shown that, they get lost 5th, 8th, and they can't recover in high school. Enfield is a grade and a half in 3rd grade, they're at grade level at 8th grade. What's going to happen at 10th grade? We're going to be a grade and a half, two grades behind? That's where we're going. The state-of-the-art's got to be in the elementary schools. And that's where we need to put our money. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak for the council for the second time? For the third? Hearing, hearing done, declare public communications closed.
No, that's fun.
Item number eight, council communications. Councilor Crisati.
Okay, through the mayor to town manager. This is in regard to the South River Street Bridge. Has there been any update from the Department of Transportation in terms of emergency repair on that, on that bridge?
I talked to Director Public Works, Jonathan Bilmis, on that, and they've actually gone out, they did bids, they have nationally-recognized bid, building, bridge contractor that was on the state list who's looking at it. They'll be coming up with an interim report as to what the short-term repairs will be. As you know, it's scheduled to be replaced in 2021, but this will be something, it's closed now. The timeframe of Mr. Crisati, probably according to Public Works, is by the time they get the information into us and it's reviewed, and they'd be able to start, if it's on the fast track, best-case scenario would be, they would be able to perhaps do the work starting in September. But we've got to identify sources for the repairs. There's nothing, nothing budgeted. So I'm looking, we seem to have identified some money in the Enfield revitalization that was fund used to do improvements around the pond. So there is money there, we'll see if it's eligible. We have to, one, they'll come forward with, with a acceptable fix to the state DOT, we'll get a price on it, we'll have to then come up with where we're going to get the funding for it, and then they'll commence to do the work. But it's going to be closed through the fall.
All right. Okay, because I, I do have concerns. I know that the, the trash and everything has been addressed with the residents. But in terms of emergency vehicles, you know, fire trucks getting down through there, that's a concern to the residents down there. You know, in case of a, a major emergency, are there going to be vehicles that are going to be allowed to be there? To my understanding, that if an emergency vehicle does need to get down into that area, I believe the Department of Transportation has given permission with, with the police to let people through? Am I correct in that assumption?
That's what Mr. Bilmis informed me of, because one of the concerns for emergency vehicles, they do have access in an emergency.
All right. Now, now, the other issue that, that has come up and been brought up to me is deliveries. All right, people's medication, it might come through FedEx or something like that, and the trucks can't get through. Or nor can they get underneath the other underpass, because the trucks just are, you know, too large. So, or, oil deliveries. And I know that, and Chief Fox is here, and I just wanted to ask you if your, if your department has been notified to make any arrangements to let anybody through for any of these types of emergencies that might have come up.
You know, I'll have to actually put that through to Public Works, because we don't have officers stationed there.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's closed.
Yeah.
And, you know, with barricades. So it's not like we have, we have an officer there who's going to make this decision on a discretionary basis. So I will talk to Public Works tomorrow to see what, if any, policies in place for those types of vehicles. But at some point, if you continue to let all these vehicles through, and the bridge is unsafe.
Right.
They are at risk. So at some point, there have to be other accommodations, because otherwise, they might as well just open it, and the state wants it closed. So we can't, you know, we have to have the, the rule, but the exceptions can't be bigger than the rule, that for all intents and purposes, we're letting everybody through until it collapses.
Correct.
So I'll, I'll talk to him tomorrow and find out about oil deliveries, other trucks, such as medical.
I mean, I never even thought of this until, you know, emails and telephone calls come, come blaring through, so.
Well, of course, it has huge implications. You have a bridge there, you've got several homes, and people don't realize how much traffic goes through that small area. So it's something that's got to be addressed. But again, it is going to be an inconvenience for several months at best.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep.
Anyone else? Councilor Davis.
Bob and Jack, as always, thanks. Thanks for coming and speaking. It's always great hearing everything from you guys. Steve, I totally agree with you, what's going on with Enfield Pizza. We, we, I don't know why, it just seems like we have an issue being business-friendly. You know, we need to be thanking him. And I do see posts and more people ordering pizza now, because of what he's going through, which is nice to the community, and that's why I love Enfield, the people that live here, because they're rallying behind to, to support him and help him. He should not be being put through what he's been put through. I totally agree with you. I have a question on, I know we talked about, everybody that came and spoke was pretty much from the Warman Center, so I don't even know who can answer it. But, what are we doing for the homeless in our town right now? Or, you know, I, I think all of them that came up, Roseanne, Priscilla, Lisa, Lorraine, Monica. And I've worked the shifts, the night shift at the Warman Center, and at 7:00 in the morning, they have nowhere to go, the soup kitchen's not open yet for them to even go, and the mall opens up at 8:00, so a lot of them go to the mall to keep warm in the winter. So it's great that we can get this grant and do the mobile thing, but what are we honestly doing for our homeless right now that are living on our streets? Is my concern. I'm hoping somebody can answer, I don't know if you can, Dawn, or something, because they had great questions, it'd be great to get an answer. I mean, no one should be out on the streets. So I'm hoping with that. One other question I had through the mayor to town manager, if it could be answered on. We want to hire, tell them I'm getting hold of any of my glasses. Our back taxes, right, delinquent collection? So we're interviewing law firm, and they get, what, 15%? So I'm wondering, are attorneys in town, they can't do it, that we have to hire out, and they get 15% of the cost? Or are we able to just do it in-house and not pay anybody 15%?
I spoke to Mr. Wilcox about that. They basically went to a bid. Normally, it's done by collection firms, because it is kind of a specialized area as to how they do it. And he is assessing that. One of the persons who bid happened to be a law firm that can actually bring claims in small claims court, which collection agencies can't. So it gives them an extra ability, so that they just don't threaten it, and then we, when they don't comply, we then have to get lawyers to do it. We'll look to see what the numbers are, and John and I discussed that, to see if it's something that the town attorney's office would be utilized for. Sometime, it depends how many cases there are, what it involves, and that's an option. But I've talked to him about it, but again, that was done as a broad proposal, that's one of the persons who responded to it. And that's one of the questions he and I looked at. We're also expanding, I have a meeting tomorrow with he and also EMS, because we've talked about collections and billing, to look at, to see the applicability to them, and then we'll report back before any decision is made.
Okay, thank you. And now, I want to also say thank you for sending the email asking about the report for Barnard, because my understanding, OSHA did send it last week.
I have a report on that during my report.
Thank you, okay, so good, good, all right. So I appreciate that. And then if somebody can just answer, Jack had probably 20 different questions, and Jack, I wish I knew the answers, but I don't, I'm not even going to sit up here and act like I do. So if somebody here actually knows the answers to some of his questions, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Denny.
Yes, I'm, I'm sitting up here tonight, and I got a lot of heartburn. One of the, one of the heartburn questions I have is, a gentleman spoke earlier, and maybe I'm out of line, talking about employment with the town, but we have electrician, one person, Butch, who I know personally, we're killing the guy. And somehow, somewhere, we had a second electrician for a little while, and now he's gone. And there's one person that's doing, you name it, he's doing it all, and we're paying him a lot of overtime. The other heartburn I have is, everywhere I go, there's a new business going into Moore Rug. They're having a problem with the town once again, with the planning and planning department, and what do we do? We eliminate a job vital to the town of Enfield. You know, if you get some of these projects off the road, that brings revenue in here. But we don't do that. We play games with people with a, with one-car-drive parking place. We have a, a board here that supposedly, to take into consideration, projects, Board of Appeals, who just look at regulations. Oh, that's the regulation, sorry, see you later, goodbye. That's another heartburn of mine. The other heartburn is this, we have a drug problem here in Enfield, big time. I think I've got, you all probably have, it has been in the newspaper, though, but six or seven in the last month, maybe more, couple of deaths here and there. We have a police department that's understaffed, we don't staff them. We have no walking patrols in Thompsonville. Oh yeah, we're borrowing money from Peter to pay Paul to get a few police officers down there. But yet, I get a text message that the 4th of July Committee is, it's unacceptable to cut police for three days of a, of a festival. When, in some place, I read that the original agreement was about $31,000. We've been spending more than $31,000 on police protection for a three-day celebration. The police need not to come here for three days with $46,000 in overtime costs, we need police protection. We need people, four police officers, to go back with this group that we had before. But oh no, we can't afford that. So to hell with the, the drug problem, let's, let's have a big celebration for three days. The 4th of July celebration should be one day, July 4th, on the celebration, have your fireworks, have your party, and go home. And that's what it was like before. But not anymore, it's a three-day deal. Buildings and grounds expense, police expense, all this money that we throw away, and we have people that are on this council, let's say we should do business differently now. We can't do business like we did in the past. But damn it, we're still doing it!
Councilor Enger.
Okay, I have a few congratulatory comments to make. Although our Memorial Day Parade got rained out, we had a beautiful ceremony at Enfield High in the auditorium, and I want to thank all our military for those who have served. And the Enfield High Band and JFK Band, they did a great job. I also wanted to congratulate Kevin Stroine. The town gave him a proclamation for earning his Eagle Scout status, and they had a nice ceremony for him. Also, the ETC, the Enfield Together Coalition, had their appreciation dinner, and that was really nice, and Chef O did not disappoint. He did a good job with the food, and thank you to that organization and all that they do. Also, the ETC and Youth Services had a meeting last Wednesday. We invited all the churches in town to come together, and as far as I know, that's never been done. Dealing with our opioid crisis and our youth situation, that this is really an untapped resource. So I wanted to thank everybody who came out for that, and we had a very good meeting. Also, Enfield High had their awards breakfast this week, three days of it, with all these honor students. So congratulations to all these students with their great grades, keep up the good work. And that's it. Thank you.
Senator Mueller.
One question, through the mayor to the town manager. Could you contact the state to mow the exit ramps by 91? And when will we be mowing our high grass? It's getting pretty bad.
I, I talked to Public Works about our own internal, and they're still doing the street sweeping, so when that's concluded, they will move to the So, when that's concluded, they will move to the grass, because I've had some interested residents contacting me.
Thank you.
But in regard to the state, I will, will have them reach out tomorrow and ask the state about their areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Paul.
Sunday, I had the privilege of attending the soup kitchen, thank you, luncheon. It was just, I'm amazed at how many volunteer organizations there are within the town that support them, a lot of the religious groups and churches and what have you. And all the awards that they gave out were certainly well worth it and to people who are very deserving of it. And they provide a very needed function in our town. You heard Priscilla tonight talk about the fact, the homeless and what have you, but coming down there to eat. Well, there's 100,000 meals or so that they serve every, every year to help with this situation. It doesn't solve the problem, but it certainly helps to address some of the issues surrounding the problem. So, kudos to Priscilla and Murray for running that program and all the volunteers that support it. Thank you.
Deputy Mrs. Zane.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move items E, F, G, H, I, and J to miscellaneous and proceed to vote.
I have a motion to suspend the rules and move items E through J to miscellaneous. We have a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All, I show hands, all those in favor? Those opposed? Nine in favor, zero against. Moving on to item nine, town manager reporting communications.
Thank you. One of the questions earlier was what is the amount of the block grant that we had the public hearing on? The amount that they're requesting is $310,212.56. That's the request. There's, you know, obviously time responsibility if we get it. And as with other grants of this sort, Dawn has indicated as well, if the funds are expended and the grant isn't renewed, then the service will end. So, it's not a legacy that we will have to then fund by Enfield taxpayers unless you choose to do so. Post Office Road, we had received a complaint, actually a concern this morning because the washout of that path with the utility crosses the road. So, I contacted Public Works. John Kabibo reached out to the contractor, and he said he would go out and address it. I checked it later in the morning. They did. They repatched it for now, but I will make the inquiry as to when the permanent patch will be done. You've heard some of the concerns about jobs that are eliminated and custodial and the HVAC. I also had an opportunity to discuss those with the Public Works Director because, you know, we passed the budget now, as of July 1st, these things become reality, and they're going to have effects. I would just tell you that one of the things you're anxiously awaiting is the NOVAC, the Work Management Report for Public Works. I discussed that with him. That should be forthcoming shortly. It is going to address a lot of those concerns. It will give guidance to the council going forward in the budget. I, I know that during the budget process, sometimes our employees and the supervisors and employees, they're not aware of what budget cuts directors are making or asking for the council to make or those that are ultimately implemented. I think that's sort of a deficit. We have to address that because they should hear from it, from their, from people within the, you know, the organization and the director supervisors after it becomes known. And they're addressing that through HR, because some of these things are going to require layoffs, and it requires HR to let these people know how they're going to be affected. I will just say this. We're going to work diligently to try to have a public relations to the community to let them know what specific budget impacts have had on different programs that they've become accustomed to. One of the items later, we're going to have to address that because money has been removed, and now it's going to have an impact that you need to address. What I can tell you is we're going to try to, you know, have good communication, public communication, and let the directors and other department let the public know. Because make no mistake, this budget was a difficult one, and there have been cuts, and there will be impact to services across the town. So, I think the reaction that you've gotten, you can expect more of that. What I'm going to do in my short tenure is try at least to communicate that and work with both employees to let them know, and then the public, before these, you know, there's different hours of operation, there's different things that aren't going to be provided. And we'll try to let people know that in advance so they can try to accommodate as best they can. In regard to what Counselor Davis had indicated in my meeting with Public Works last week, I asked about the status of the OSHA report on Henry Barner so we can keep this moving forward. So, to that end, they sent the request today, this morning. I don't know if it was coincidental or not, but then the report came in late this afternoon. I haven't had an opportu, opportunity to look at it. Public Works is looking at it, and I'll meet with the director tomorrow, and then we'll pass it on to the council, and where appropriate, make it public. The PAR report, I will accept questions. I've tried to review it and become familiar with it. There's a lot of information in there, and perhaps we're going to par it down a little bit for you, but I'll talk to leadership. There are items that are highlighted that are new. If you have any questions, you can ask me, but please have patience. If I'm not up to speed on it, I will get you the answer over the course of the next couple of days. Mr. Arnone.
Counselor.
So, on the PAR, we'll go to the police and the opioid addiction assistance, and this is a, a new protocol for the opioid. And please, I know it's late tonight, and I felt that this was important enough that we really needed to address it. This spans two councils now, and, and I think I can speak for this entire council on how much we have worked hard to, in our efforts to try to get the appropriate task force in place and, and move into new, new territory and new grounds in this, in this epidemic we have. This started with the opioid task force probably about three years ago. We're trying to find new ways to address the opioid problem. We had some different towns come and, and tell us what they're doing. Manchester had a, a program that was, it all started also up in Massachusetts with a program up in, up in Massachusetts, also with the police department and how they handle opioid overdoses, how they can get help, how they can do treatment. So, I asked the, our new chief here, Chief Fox, he just put this out. Actually, I don't know if you know it or not, it's on your Facebook page right now. And I, and I want everybody just to take, think for one minute, for one hour on Facebook. This is, already has 600 likes, 249 shares, and 51 comments, all positive about this new initiative that you'll hear from Chief Fox in a minute. A small portion of what we're going to try to do to stop this epidemic in our town. But this is, will probably be the most, you know, liked page that you'll have in a long time. So, I'm going to let Chief Fox take it over, but I'd also like to mention the opioid task force, which is social services, in particular, Gene Hoy and the Youth Services that run this task force. And I'm not sure of the liaisons here. Bob and Peter, thank you.
In a moment, Manager Arnone. The chief, obviously, was gracious enough to come this evening, and he's going to address not only that, as long as you would like, and answer your questions. He's also going to address an item we have at the end of the agenda. He is making a application for a grant through Department of Justice, I believe, for $50,000, and he'll explain. He's not going to go into great detail about how we'll implement it, but he has a plan because he had to have that to submit it. And then before he goes, are there any other questions in the general nature on the PAR before we let him specifically address his? Then now, Mr. Arnone, you're on, chief.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to join you tonight. In follow-up to the comments that were made, which I do echo 100%, I am very pleased to share with you that the Enfield Police Department has pushed out a new general order that addresses the specific area that Mr. Arnone raised for you a few moments ago. The opioid issue has at least, well, at least two battlegrounds, if you will. There is the law enforcement battleground, and there's a great deal of passion in that regard, and I certainly feel that as well. But there is certainly also, of equal importance, the social service response to this issue. It took a little while to sort of get our sea legs under us and to figure out where it was. You wanted to go as a community to meld those ideas with, with the mindset that I had. I'm very pleased to share with you that on May 28th, we issued a department-wide opioid addiction response protocol. In summary, what it calls for, modeled after the Manchester PD program, which is in fact modeled after the Gloucester, Massachusetts program, is really a bifurcated approach, if you will. In the event that an addicted individual contacts the Enfield Police Department or shows up at the Enfield Police Department and says, "I need help. I want help." What I have instructed the officers, and at this point, the word is "shall," that they will provide that assistance in lieu of an arrest. We'll take whatever substances they want to turn in. We'll take whatever paraphernalia they want to turn in. That'll be entered into evidence, that'll be destroyed, and the individual will be rooted to St. Francis Medical Center, which at present is the appropriate receiving center for such individuals. In a meeting that we were at, that several of you attended, St. Francis said it's us. Johnson said we're close. When Johnson is up and running, just geographically, there'll be a more convenient choice, and it'll raise less labor concerns, to the extent that I'd be pushing somebody out of town for an extended period. The second piece of the discussion are the individuals that we may interact with, where it's more a situation where we discover them instead of them raising their hands for us. And this, for better or worse, is a situation or series of situations that are about this big. It runs a series of, an entire number of gamuts, if you will. And what I need to do, and what Manchester did as well, was to vest in their officers and our supervisors the discretion to go the arrest route or the care route or both, depending on the circumstances that might be appropriate. And I would give you just the two extremes. If we found a person who was addicted, who we saved with a Narcan Blast, and they said, "I've got a problem. I want help," clearly that's a person we need to take for help. The fact that there might be drugs that are kicking around, even though they didn't contact us, we found them, that's an appropriate individual to be rooted to care. On the other hand, to paint the far extreme in the other direction for you, if we had spent days working a criminal investigation with undercover officers and informants and a tactical team and a search warrant, and we had bad people inside, and we were able to go on inside and secure a scene, and a narcotics trafficker said, "I'm drug addicted. I want help." I don't think that would be an appropriate use of our resources at that point to give that individual a pass, if you will. So, shall help those individuals who contact us and ask for care. May help those individuals that we interact with that are beyond personal use situations. Finally, there are some individuals that, because of complications, don't fit neatly into this paradigm. If an individual was the subject of a pending arrest warrant, where there was a court set bond that they could not make, it would not be in my province. Frankly, it would be way outside my authority to somehow void or attempt to void that warrant in, in favor of getting them care. We would, of course, provide them with appropriate medical care during their detention, but an arrest warrant with a bond they can't make requires the arrest warrant jump to the front of the line. If I had a DCF mandated reporter situation, an individual who was involved in narcotics activity, and there were children in the home, our mandated reporter obligation would again have to trump our other responsibilities. That's state law. An individual under 18, if we could not obtain parental consent. And finally, that narcotics trafficker, who may also be a user that I alluded to earlier. In totality, I think this is a very positive step. I've received positive feedback from within the police department. It's not a feel-good piece of policy, and it is consistent with what your ask was of this agency. Thank you for the opportunity to present this for you.
Could you spend one minute, two also, on protective custody? Would that be appropriate?
Yes, sir. I believe that it would. In the context, in the broader context of these discussions, a point that, that frankly I was aware of, but it may not be, it may have not been common knowledge, is that Connecticut's protective custody statute, I would delicately offer, may be slightly out of date. The protective custody statute allows primarily law enforcement personnel to involuntarily take an individual for emergency medical care if they are under the influence of liquor, if they are presenting a danger to, to other individuals, if they're unable to care for themselves. The way the statute is written, what it does not include is, it does not include, shockingly so, an individual who has just overdosed, who we, or the EMS, or the fire department has saved, who says, "May I sign my medical release right now? I don't want any further care." That's shocking to me, and I think it is a hiccup within our law. I think what we're describing, or what I'm describing for you, is our state statute has not kept up with the problems that exist in the year 2018. So, through several of you, I think this is an issue for our General Assembly to address. I can draft the language, but certainly Representative Stokes, Senator Kissel, Representative Hall will be the ones that would need to advance this for, for further consideration. It's a, it's a hiccup. It's a shortcoming in the, in the Connecticut protective custody statute. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
I, for one, would like to see you draft that and get it, so we can implement that. Perhaps in the next legislature.
Yes, sir.
If we initiate the activity now and get it into motion, perhaps it could be in front of the legislature next year.
Yeah, the, the writing is not the difficult part, is, you know, I'm looking for your...
It starts somewhere.
I can crank it out quickly. I, I need, I need the audience with, with folks that you would probably have a better liaison with.
Okay. As long as you draft it up, we'll get it to them.
Mr. Mayor, I will ask the chief to try to keep track of statistics through his, his computer people there so we can generate a report to see how this is going on a, you know, perhaps a quarterly basis, so we actually know how many times there have been referrals or arrests, and we can monitor the program that way. Then lastly, chief, could you just briefly address the grant you're submitting to justice?
Can I, can I throw one more thing in too? Also, just again, for social services, because there is some tracking going on along with this program, could, so we're tracking some of the overdoses too and following up through social services, so they can follow through to make sure that they get all the help and find all the medical support they need. So, I just want to make sure that, that part's in place too.
Both parts, okay.
So, it's all starting to work in, in together, and really great meshed gears. Thank you.
So, if you want to talk on the grant, chief?
Yes. There's been some interest on the council's part and certainly some interest on mine in the pursuit of outside monies wherever available to try to supplement what you're able to provide in regard to law enforcement in a general sense, opioid issues in a specific sense. I should, I should couch my comments by letting you know that grant writing done properly is, is pretty much a full-time job for an individual. What I have is my evening shift lieutenant, and I can't speak higher, more highly of him than I, than I will right now. Lieutenant Mark Squires gets all the credit here. I am very pleased to have thrown him a pass, and it was a short pass at that, and I told him to march the football down the field. We are not at the goal line, but we are very preliminarily, I'm feeling good, about a $50,000 grant application to the Department of Justice that we have labeled Community Police Revitalization 2018. Our primary purpose on the grant would be threefold. I'd like to reopen community policing at the La Mania Center on a more permanent basis. I'm somewhat hesitant to get down into the weeds, but I will tell you that if the money is spent judiciously, I have, if I get the $50,000, recognizing that I'm either paying the officer overtime to be at La Mania, or the staffing levels are such that I'm paying backfill on patrol for the officer to be at La Mania, I can stretch that $50,000 into 111 shifts. If I use that money to supplement the Thompsonville money that you've made available, and I use that word specifically, supplementing is allowed, supplanting is not. If I use your money and this money, if we receive it, I think I may be able to keep one person at the La Mania Center, eight hours a day, five days a week, for one year. That individual will address blight issues in Thompsonville, make contacts with the local Thompsonville community, and engage in some proactive narcotics enforcement at the seller-dealer level. I also think that we could host a series of community policing events, cookout, bicycle jamboree, basketball with kids, perhaps a movie afternoon with a large screen and a projector, cookies, coffee with a cop, something along those lines. And I also, we've had some discussions with social services already about other community-wide events, maybe even here at the town hall, heroin issues, suicide prevention, cyberbullying, whatever it is we can squeeze onto that grant. We are not at the goal line, but I will tell you that the aims and objectives of the grant, as I see them, I would award it to us if I was making the decision. I'm not. We'll see what the nice folks in Washington have to say.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
One more question. We, we had talked about the cops program and additional officers at a reduced rate. I don't know if you've given that any consideration as well.
Well, I would love to do that, but I mean, I, I have to be candid. The lieutenant who I have doing this, I don't want to go off script here, but I'm using him because he's an attorney, because he's a... an attorney, because he's a very smart individual, he's got a tremendous work ethic. He is watching the prisoners in the police department while he is supervising the shift, while he's signing off on the reports. I can write, I can have a lot of grant applications written, but it's, it is a significant resources drain. It's frankly, to be candid, it's more than what one person can do in addition to their current job duties.
Maybe we could have a discussion with our town manager, and maybe something can be worked out. Maybe somebody else could help with that.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, chief. And we have had that discussion.
Item 10, Town Attorney Report.
I will just let you know, by way of introduction, most of you know her, but this is Maria Elsdon. She is the Senior Assistant Town Attorney, and she will be sitting here at the council meetings while I'm sitting here.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. Good evening, everyone. Just one item in terms of a report. We are hosting a Freedom of Information workshop, two weeks from this Wednesday, in the council chambers, 6:30. And we've sent an email to the boards and commissions, but the public is also welcome. Tom Hennig from the Freedom of Information Commission will be there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
Good job.
Item 12, Old Business, on page one, appointments. There are no appointments for Town Council. Three through 15, on page two, again, appointments. There are none. Page three, again, the council appointments, 16 through 23, there are none. I don't believe on item B, appointments for the town manager. I don't believe he has any on one through six. Page four, seven through 12, Discussion C, Resolution in Enfield High stays on the table. D shouldn't, does that, I thought we voted on D. Was that still on?
I thought we turned it. Discussion Resolution Authorized.
Okay, yeah.
The memorandum.
And then item E is the Resolution Authorizing Town Manager Enter into...
Yeah, that's one we had.
Chris, item E, Resolution Authorizing a Manager Enter into Memorandum of Understanding Between Enfield and the Fire Districts. Should that be removed from the table?
Yes.
We have a motion to move item E by Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Denny. Any discussion on the resolution?
Quite briefly, this is something Brian had talked about and worked with the fire chiefs. It came to us. I had it reviewed by John Wilcox and Della, because they actually oversee and implement it. We had a meeting with them to review it. They thought it was appropriate. Basically, this stems from a 1976 resolution of understanding. There were three fire departments then, and it was an agreement to do their tax collections at a rate of 3% that could increase to 5%. It has remained at 3% over, well, since 1976. Lee Erdman did a review of it to see if he thought that was appropriate. When he was here during his stint, he thought that it was. I wanted to reiterate that and make sure nothing had changed. Talking to John and Della, they think that's appropriate and fair. So this agreement really codifies it, but what was included at request of some council individuals that we sunset it. Because given the uncertainty of the budget with the state, and further cutbacks, and perhaps increases, we wanted to be able to have either party be able to, like we do in a lot of agreements, terminate it with 30-day notice, or, under this particular agreement, it will sunset in two years, but the council can renew it after we've talked. I would imagine you'd want to talk to Della and John, or hopefully they'll still be here, or their successors, and find out if they believe it's still fair and equitable to both sides, and then you would have the ability to renew it. But this gives, I think they wanted certainty that it would be codified, and that we wanted from our side an ability to adjust it if economics required.
So I'll read the resolution, and if anyone has any questions after the resolution.
I will tell you this, Mr. Mayor. We, Brian talked to the fire chiefs. They have a meeting that I will be attending. They have one this Thursday. I talked to one of the chiefs. We sent them the final draft, and if they had any questions, instructed them to let me know. I didn't hear back from them. But clearly, if they did, I'll be there Thursday. If they don't, if they had some concerns that, as a group, when they're together Thursday, they have, and they want to wait to sign it, we've authorized it, and I can bring back any concerns they have. Otherwise, they can just sign it, and we're done.
Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager Enter into Memorandum of Understanding Between the Town of Enfield and Enfield Fire Districts for Collection and Distribution of Taxes. Whereas the Town and the Districts wish to formally document the practice of the towns collecting, distributing, and invoicing in districts for their proportionate share of revenues and expenses associated with tax collection, now therefore be it resolved by the Enfield Town Council, the acting town manager, Chris W. Bronson, is authorized to execute the attached memorandum of understanding in a name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield, with Enfield Fire District 1, Thompsonville Fire District 2, Hazerville Fire District Number 3, Shaker Pines Fire District Number 5, and North Thompson, North Thompsonville Fire District Number 10.
So moved.
By Deputy Mayor Falk, seconded by Deputy Mayor Suzak, seconded by Counselor Falk. Any further discussion? Counselor Denny?
Yes, I'm not against the two-year thing, but I just think that in some people's minds, they might be thinking about, after the two years, to increase this. Just keep in mind, I want everybody to here on a council, and those who might be a future councilperson, that keep this in mind, that if you increase the 3%, you're still taxing the same taxpayers. Every person that lives in a fire district that pays fire district tax is also a town resident who's paying taxes. So whether you charge 3% or the town goes up to 5%, those taxpayers are still our taxpayers, and are still coming out of the same pocket. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnoni.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item 13, New Business. There's no consent agenda, and no appointments for D, B, C, and D by the council, the town manager. Move item 14. Items for discussion. Again, no consent agenda. Appointments B1, we have none at this time. Two, three, or four, I don't believe there's any as well. Item C, appointments by the town manager, one, two, or three. None. No appointments for item D. E, F, G, and H, I, and J have moved to miscellaneous, so now we move to miscellaneous, which we have. Item E, Discussion Resolution. Schedule a public hearing regarding the 2018 Neighborhood Assistant Act. Resolution setting the public hearing for the 2018 Neighborhood Assistant Act. Resolve that the Enfield Town Council hold a public hearing in the Enfield Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, on Monday, June 18th, at 6:50 p.m., to allow interested citizens an opportunity to express their opinion regarding the 2018 Neighborhood Assistant Act proposals submitted on May 14, 2018, by the town manager's office.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Arnon, seconded by Counselor Falk. Any quick...
We've done it before. Dawn is here for questions, but basically, as the council knows, this is a state program which allows nonprofit organizations and government agencies to solicit private sector enterprise for donations to support specific community service programs.
Your microphone.
And we've done it many times. If you have any questions for Dawn, I'm sure she's available to answer them.
Oh, Dawn, anything specific?
I have to make it up, because I don't do the neighborhood assistance.
Oh, you don't?
No, I think Maya Matthews is actually a senior.
Oh, all right. I just thought Dawn knew everything.
Yeah.
No, but I had the memo which included, and that's basically what it is, and we've done it in years past, so this is consistent with it.
Hearing none. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnoni.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item F, Under Miscellaneous. Resolution Creating a Part-Time Social Worker Job Description for Family Resources. Resolution Creating a Part-Time Social Worker Position for the Family Resource Center. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter Eight, excuse me, Chapter Seven, Section Two of the Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council here, does hereby create the position of a part-time social worker, submitted on 5/25/18 by Don Homer Boutheier, Director of Social Services.
So moved.
By Counselor Arnon, seconded by Counselor Crissati.
This is Dawn, and we've gone over it. She worked with Steve Belinda, took the full-time social services job description, adjusted it to her needs for a part-time social service person at the Family Resource Center. It is going to replace a parent educator. The impact is the same. There are less hours, but there are no benefits, so the cost is the same. And it's something she's deemed appropriate at this time. If you have questions, she is still here for you.
Questions? Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnoni.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item G, Under Miscellaneous. Discussion Resolution. Resolution waiving the bid requirement for mobile shelter diversion services. Whereas the Enfield Department of Social Services is applying for a small cities community development block grant, parentheses, grant to provide mobile shelter diversion services, parentheses, services to reduce and eliminate homelessness. And whereas the Enfield Department of Social Services will need a qualified subcontract to provide these services if the grant is awarded, and whereas the Community Health Resource, Inc., parentheses, CHR is uniquely qualified to coordinate and deliver these services to constituents that are homeless or in a process of becoming homeless in Enfield and surrounding towns, and whereas CHR has been identified as the only organization in the region with the knowledge, infrastructure, and pragmatic experiments, experience to successfully provide these services, now therefore be it resolved in accordance with Chapter Five, Section Eight, Paragraph D of the Enfield Town Charter, the Enfield Town Council does hereby determine that it is against the best interests of the town to require competitive bidding for mobile shelter diversion services submitted on April 27, 2018, by Don Homer Boutheier, Director of Social Services.
So moved.
By Councilman Falk, seconded by Counselor Arnon. Discussion.
I think that we've contained, there is a cover memo, but I think the memo lays it out in pretty much detail. Dawn is here to answer the questions. But again, we've said previously, and also the town attorney's office has looked at it again, when you're going to waive a bid, there has to be a compelling reason to do so, that it's against the best interests of the town to go out to bid. She set that forth, that these are the only people really in the area that have the ability to deliver the service, and therefore she's come to you and asked for this bid waiver.
Any questions?
I think CHR is the group that gives services for the opioid crisis, and they provide many of the same services that we're talking about here. So it's a nice fit. It's perfect.
I don't know, Dawn, if you want to, I know you, I mean, you've been patient all night.
My first at that.
Vacation. So, yes, it actually is quite a, CHR does a very comprehensive service. The reason that we think this is such a good fit are two basic factors. One, they already do this service, except they're going to put people in cars to do it in different locations. And secondly, they have a fairly large grant from the State Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services. They actually have some resources, financial resources, they can bring to the table to help with the relocation. So that's something that we don't have to figure out already. So for those primary reasons, I think that this is the best option for us.
You mentioned earlier about measuring outcomes.
Yes.
Somewhat pretty simple in my mind, is folks who are not homeless.
Yeah. So interestingly, we're required by the Department of Housing to use their HMIS system, which is a statewide system to quantify who gets what service, and who gets diverted, who ends up in shelter. And we'll give you all kinds of data. Yep.
Again, I appreciate you being proactive.
Sure.
Thank you. Appreciate you hanging in there all night. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dawn.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnoni.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item H, Under Miscellaneous. Discussion Resolution Authorizing the Acting Town Manager Sign the Cops/Community Policing Development Grant Application. Whereas the Cops/Community Policing Development Grant would allow the Enfield Police Department to strengthen its ties in the community, and continue the agency's problem-oriented approach to policing. And whereas the grant would allow the police department to open and staff the community policing office located in 19 North Main Street on a more permanent basis, as well as implement programs and events for local agencies such as youth services and blight enforcement, resolve that Acting Town Manager Christopher W. Bronson is authorized to sign and submit the grant application in name and on behalf of the Town of Enfield, with the Department of Justice, for a Cops/Community Policing Development Grant, and affixed the corporate seal, submitted on May 28, 2018, by our police department.
So moved.
By Counselor Arnon, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Any discussion?
This is the grant to which the chief addressed during my town manager's report.
Hearing none. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
Counselor Davis.
Four.
Counselor Denny.
Four.
Counselor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mueller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzak.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Arnoni.
Four.
Counselor Sakala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item I, Under Miscellaneous. Discussion Resolution Authorizing the Expenditure of Project Revenues to Complete the Henry Barnard School Roof Replacement. Resolve the Enfield Town Council hereby authorize the funding in the amount of $250,000 for a roof replacement project at Henry Barnard Elementary School, submitted on May 31, 2018.
So moved.
By the town manager's office. Motion by Counselor Falk, seconded by Counselor Mueller. Any discussion, or, Chris, any...
This was something that both Greg and John spent a lot of time on over the end of last weekend today, to make sure that this would comport with the state requirement for our reimbursements, the facilities. Committee came up with an amount they believe it will be. We are responsible for our share. This is the maximum, but we've got to indicate to the state that we will step up to the plate, and if they give us the grant, that we will fund our share. And this is the maximum exposure the town would have. It could be less. And if there are any specific questions, Greg and John can answer them for you.
Counselor Denny?
Well, yeah, this says, "Project Revenue to Complete the Henry Barnard School Roof Replacement," and we're technically, we're not replacing the whole roof. Am I right or not?
We're doing the two west wings, the northwest wing and the southwest wing.
So should that maybe read that, that we're not replacing the whole roof? I think, I'm not sure.
I think so. I think we should amend, amend the...
Amen.
The resolution to say the north and southwest wing, not of the older building, not the addition, not the kindergarten, well, what was the kindergarten addition? Not the classroom addition on the southwest wing.
Is that, is that a, is that a, so moved?
So moved.
And a second. Can we make it to say we're doing, we're starting partial replacement of the roof?
Yeah.
I mean...
Yeah.
I'll ask you this. Actually, Chris is here. He's been the point man with the state. Their language was very specific as to what they wanted with the resolution. I'm going to have him come up to make sure what you pass is something that he believes the state will accept, because this is acceptable. I would recommend leaving it, because the state has accepted this, but I'll defer to Chris.
Yes, this language is fairly specific from the state. As long as the word "partial" is in there, partial roof replacement, it doesn't have to be any more specific than that.
Chris, could you identify yourself, Chris, so the rest of the people at home know who you are?
Sure. Chris Cyclie Construction Solutions Group, owner's project manager.
Well, it doesn't say, this just says the replacement of the roof, and...
It says portion.
Oh, it does say portion?
It says portion.
Okay.
Not in the resolution, it doesn't.
Not in the resolution, no.
Okay, sir. Can you, can someone reread the resolution?
Resolve the Enfield Town Council hereby authorize the funding in the amount of $250,000 for roof replacement project at Henry Barnard Elementary School.
It should say partial roof replacement project.
I agree.
Okay.
So you want the heading and the text.
Right.
You want it to say partial.
Partial.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And again, when you say owner at the end, what you actually do, could you explain to everybody what your actual position is? It's in our advocate.
Sure. Yeah, I, yes, I advocate for the Town of Enfield with respect to the Barnard School partial roof replacement. We'll be submitting the grant application in the coming days, meeting with the state to get our approval, to go out to bid, to bid this project eventually, get it installed, and then work with the state on the payment reimbursement side as well, and then closing out this project. And very similar, but much more elongated process through, for JFK, for that grant application as well.
So we need to... Oh, sorry.
This is also, Chris's fee is reimbursed under our, by the state, whereas if we did, if we hired people and did it in-house, it would not be reimbursed as part of the project.
Correct. Myself, as well as the architectural design fees. We need a design and a professional cost estimate for the grant to be submitted to the state.
Thank you. Any questions?
So we're going to make a motion?
Yeah, so thank you for hanging in there, first of all.
Thanks.
Motion to add the word "partial" on the resolution, the actual bolded resolution, and then within the resolution itself. So moved by Counselor Mueller, seconded by...
Second.
By Counselor Denny. So again, first, this is by, we can do a hand vote, and then we vote on the overall, right? So on the amendment, the amendment of adding the word we vote on the overall, right? So, on the amendment, the amendment of adding the word "partial" both to the bolded resolution within the wording itself, any discussion on the amendment? Hearing done by show hands, all those in favor. Those opposed, we have ten in favors here, against as amended. Now, for the main resolution as amended. Any discussion on the main resolution as amended? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Four.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Secala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Miscellaneous, item J under miscellaneous elderly tax credit, resolution regarding elderly tax credit program, resolution number, no resolution number, whereas 605 households receive the elderly tax credits totaling approximately 699,000 in fiscal year 2017 to 2018, taxes due 7/117 and 1/118, and whereas Connecticut General Statute, Section 12-170A requires a town to issue a credit to the eligible residents, and whereas the town code section 78-81, 78-82, and 78-83 allowed a town to match the state credit, and whereas the approved budget for fiscal year 2018 and 2019 does not include the local share per the above noted town code sections, and therefore be it resolved that fiscal year 2018, 2019, the town of Enfield will grant the local share of the elderly tax credit allowed in the town code section 78-81, 78-82, and 78-83. All right, Councillor Muller, second it.
Second for discussion.
Councillor, no.
Second for discussion.
Second for discussion. So, up for discussion. Councillor, no.
So, these are, again, it even alludes to what the employees were talking about. These are some of the cuts that we received from the legislature and the state. Not the, at least the school side was made whole this budget season, but the town side was not. So, we've had two bad budget seasons back to back on the town side for grants and pilot programs, and this was one of them. This was $350,000 that were elderly tax, elderly and disabled tax credits that are no longer available, that were cut from the state budget on the last budget cycle. So, tonight, we have to make that decision if we're going to continue that program or not at that cost.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
For me, the thing is, the state's not making us whole on half of it. We're helping people, and we're allowing them to maintain an asset that will, when they don't longer need this asset, the town doesn't have any recourse to, I guess, receive any monies back. I'm all for helping people, but I think there has to be a give and take on this, and I know at this point, we don't have that kind of literature or wording in this. I will vote for it, because I feel that if I don't vote for it, I'm going to create a much larger problem, but I think in the future, we have to look at how this is actually an asset, and that when we do, you know, abate these taxes and give tax relief, that there has to be some sort of lien that's placed on the asset, because we can't be, as a community, maintaining assets for people. I think we need to be helping people, but we somehow need to keep it fair. So, that's my...
Just for an overview, and your point is well taken, for purposes of this evening, the question is, do we fund our half as we have previously? And then we can, going forward, and I think to Mr. Denny's comments earlier, if we're going to change how we do business, I think we need to start doing it now and give people notice of that. I'll just mention as an aside, on the Fourth of July, we have had overtime reductions. I directed police, Public Works, and EMS to incorporate those for this Fourth of July festival. However, I know in four weeks, we have 50,000 people coming, so we can't make drastic changes this year. If we want to enter into a discussion for next year as to how we do it, who's going to pay for it, we should start that discussion the weekend after the Fourth, but we have to start doing it. In regard to this, and let me just give you a synopsis, and Mr. Wilcox is here, because at first blush, it seems a little complicated. It really isn't. The state of Connecticut offered basically a tax credit program. 350,000 is what we gave from the state side, and then we enacted a local ordinance to be able to match it for another 350,000. Last year, we gave out about 699, almost all of it, to 605 families. As you indicated, it is to elderly, income-based, and it is also to social security disabled. Now, the conundrum we're in right now is, people have relied on it. They made the application by May, they had to do it in May, to the Department of Finance. They've done it. Last year, they received it. He has to send out, when the tax bills go out, whether they're going to get just the state share this year or our share as well. So, for instance, if we were not to fund this 350,000, all of a sudden, a person, they're eligible up to $1,500 maximum. So, they would get the 1,500 from the state, we would give 1,500. If you don't fund this, they will get half of that. Likewise, if they were to receive 1,000 from the state this year, they will not get the 1,000 from the town. A lot of these people are on fixed income. If it were your decision to say this year, we're not going to do it, I've talked to John, we would like your authority to give notice to all of those households that it won't be coming, so they just don't look at their tax bill and go, oh, my gosh, where am I going to get this money? How am I going to keep my house? I think, again, going forward, we can look at ways to recoup what state law allows. Maybe we have to look at our legislators and say, address the way we can put liens, or, you know, recoup this down the road, but for now, it's not an option. And in the past, just so you know, we, this year, funded, it's an unfunded mandate, another one, and I think you'll all appreciate that, the state share of 350 that we would give, because remember, it's a credit, the state would reimburse us. We're not getting that reimbursement this year, but we have to fund it. That is in the budget. So, you put in the 350,000. What we're asking, Mr. Wilcox needs to know, are we going to abide by, and we're not bound by the state, the town ordinance, but we have followed it, are we going to fund the other 350,000 so these people are made whole, and they're not shocked when they get that tax bill in July and find out they didn't get the credit? So, John's available. Did I state that appropriately, John? So, I think, again, it's a reality of this budget. It's a reality that the state has foisted upon you. They didn't fund the reimbursement for 350. We have to, because they didn't alleviate saying you don't have to give that credit. They said, no, you still have to give it, but you're paying for it, and now the 350 that we always funded, this year, in other words, in the past years, we gave the full 700, but we reimbursed half. This year, we funded their half, because we have to, and now the question is, do you want to fund your half as well for a total of 700,000?
I'm confused. Are we funding the whole amount out of the town's pocket?
Yes.
Yes.
Is that what we're voting on tonight?
Correct, correct. We have to do 350, and John put that in the budget, because the state said we had to offer it on their side. They used to, Mr. Denny, give us that 350 back. So, we're out that. Now, the question is, do we want to do our matching 350 that we always paid for, but it was only the half? Now, we're responsible for the whole. I think you're going to have 605 shocked households that applied, figured they're going to get it. That doesn't mean you shouldn't do it, but I want to give notice. If you decide not to do it, I want finance in the town manager's office to send notice to these people that they're eligible for the state portion, but the town will not be matching it this year, because otherwise, I think you're going to have a lot, a lot of people here at the meeting in August.
Councillor, no, then Councillor Ungary.
I'm going to let Lori go first, because I already went once.
I just wanted to say, I think it's a little late now to give notice if they're counting on it. July is just next month.
And John can tell you the specifics, but my understanding, it was in and removed after the town manager's budget was proposed, so there was no way he could, you know, get it out there for the May deadline to these people that we weren't going to fund it. He was directed to not fund it.
Okay, so he couldn't get it out to them. How come he didn't get it out to us? Why didn't staff, this was not this budget cut. This was the budget cut previous, and I had known that there were elderly cuts in the last previous budget, but really didn't zero down into them until I learned this.
Yep.
So, I mean, staff has to be, you know, when these things come up for the state budget, we need to know about this stuff, not, not well after the fact.
Yep. Well, I'll just tell you...
I know you're just in a seat where somebody else sat, and I was...
Right.
I could direct that out.
So, in the last week, John brought this right to my attention immediately and said, this is something you have to address, so we wanted to do it immediately, because those bills will go out in July, they're going to be printed, so we can't wait till the next meeting. It had to be done this evening.
So, we're actually funded 700,000.
Right.
Correct.
So, if we, so to Deputy Mayor Suzanne's question, if we were going to apply, if we were thinking of applying a lien to next year...
We'd have to look to see, again, if state law authorizes it, or that the...
Why couldn't we just do it on our part, then?
We'd have to look at our ordinance to see, see, all, and we won't get into it tonight.
Yeah, all right.
But it's all derivative from what the state statute empowers us to do, so Maria's making notes. She'll look at that to see if there's discretion. If there is not, that's another thing we could add to the list to our state legislators that, given these dire fiscal circumstances, they should allow us to do it.
Any further discussion?
I would concur. I would support this, but we need to investigate that for the facts of what Donna said, that, you know...
We're going to need, Mr. Falk, to investigate...
We're buying property that's not ours, and we should have a stake in it, which is a lien on the property, because the one that benefits is the heirs to the property when these people die, because they didn't have to pay the taxes, but they get all the profit. We, all the rest of the taxpayers paid for it.
Maria will research it.
It shouldn't be happening.
Yep. Well, we have to see if we have authority to do it. If not, the legislature has to give us authority to do it. But again, we'll know next year in time, so that you can at least go public. If we are cut again by the state, we have to do their half. Will they let us lien? And then you've got to decide if you want to fund the other half, but if we're not going to do it, we should have plenty of advance notice to let these 605 households know.
Sorry. Councillor Secala?
So, when we talked about this in general government, one of the things that Donna and I both brought up is the fact that there wasn't a policy on what could we do. I mean, everybody has to fill out an application, and they have to be eligible under that application in order to qualify for this, but I think one thing we did talk about, and Brian said, is that there is no policy in the town of Enfield on what we're going to do if there is an asset afterwards, or if they turn around and sell it, and then it shouldn't... So, I mean, I think to everybody's point is that Brian was aware that there was no policy in place. It was sort of what we've always done, or there was nothing that they had done before. So, that's something that he had directed staff to start looking at. So, somebody should probably know something about it, so... I mean, I'm supporting it anyway, but I think that, to Donna's point was...
I'll make sure they know about it tomorrow.
Yeah, perfect.
One more thing. These are also tax credits to the elderly that have paid taxes, and correct me if I'm wrong, have paid taxes for ever. And I'm a little uncomfortable with leaning people that, in their elderly years, have a hard time paying their taxes. To me, I would just like to see an elderly tax credit, period. So, you know, just think about that for a second, you know, and how, you know, our elderly has been paying into that pot for a lot of years, and to get a couple grand back in their...
Remember, it's not for the elderly, it's for the heirs. That's all it is. It's not for the elderly.
And any, so, if we would just say, just say that we're going to reduce the taxes of the elderly anyway, we wouldn't lien their houses. So, to me, that's the way I look at it. I look at it as a credit for being a good citizen and not having the income that you have, because you're on a fixed income, and I just look at it differently. So, but we'll save that debate for another day.
That's right. We'll cross that bridge when we reach it.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
You know, Tom, and you know I have to say this, because, you know, we do things, and we should, for elderly and disabled. We have a lot of young families that maybe wouldn't even qualify under this, but no one has given them consideration, and I think that that's where I feel like there's just not a fairness, that, yes, you know, we've all paid our taxes for a number of years, but there just are, there's young families, and we're asking that we abate, you know, people who have their homes for a long period of time, and we give no consideration for, you know, our struggling young families. And I'll vote yes for this, but I really think we have to stop maintaining assets for people at the cost of everybody else in town.
Hearing no further discussion. Roll call, please.
Councillor Crisati.
Four.
Councillor Davis.
Four.
Councillor Denny.
Four.
Councillor Falk.
Four.
Mayor Ludwig.
Four.
Councillor Muller.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Suzanne.
Four.
Councillor Ungary.
Four.
Councillor Arnone.
Four.
Councillor Secala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item 18, 10:30, Public Communications, item 16, excuse me, anyone like to speak for the council this time? Jack.
Jack Sheridan, 7 Buchanan Road. Is this, is this thing that we just talked about for the elderly tax credit, is that part of the circuit breaker process? It is. So, the circuit breaker's been around for a long time, and it does have certain qualifications, salary and so forth, but to be consistent, about a month ago, maybe a little longer, you guys voted to pay off or relinquish the taxes on the house, to keep people in the house. How is that different now? You can do it on one instance, but then you talk about, you know, I'll just give you an example. My grandfather, when he retired, he lived in Enfield on Fair Street. He, his pension was like, well, he didn't have a pension, but because he was in good standing, his company gave him $18 a month, and beyond that, he was, he was on social security. So, he qualified for that. Otherwise, he couldn't have stayed there. Did it benefit us in any big way? His heirs, my parents, you know? He was here all these years. I've been here 60 years. I pay my taxes, you know, so, and I'm not looking for a circuit breaker thing. I wouldn't qualify anyway, but my whole thing is that if we gave the money and got it to the schools, you know, we got reimbursed to the schools, then it just seems, it doesn't seem equitable, because you're talking about the young people, and I understand what Donna's trying to say. Young people have to struggle too, because now they've got mortgages and more expenses than seniors sitting at home. You know, if you guys had to live on what I spend in a week, you'd all be in the homes being taken care of, but anyway, I just, I want, oh, and the other thing was, Chris, you threw that number out so fast. 312 what?
310,000, 212, 56.
212, 56. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jack. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Bob.
Bob T. Katz, Woodgate Circle. Some of these arguments about this elderly tax credit is ridiculous, and I think you guys ought to come down to earth. I got a postcard from the storage facility today. Have backup calls. Open it up. We're raising your rates from $180 a month to 200. So, I went down and asked them why. They says, well, Enfield just increased their mill rate on the taxes. The electric company increased their, so it's $20. $20 per unit. They're gaining over $40,000, because you guys raised the mill rate, and the electric company raised the taxes. So, I kept saying, lower the mill rate, because now you're affecting everybody across the town, and all the storage and all the other items that people have to spend money on. You're actually costing them more money than the increased mill rate. So, and the other thing, and we're going to go back to this middle school, that school is one of the newest, in fact, it's the newest school that needs the least amount of work. The older schools, which are the elementary schools, and you have to include Stowe, that's part of the system, that belongs to the school committee. You've got to include Nathan Hale, you have to pay for that, and you're not putting very little money, you're talking about a partial roof on Barnard. The other schools need a lot more work, and you want to spend $85 million on a school that needs the least amount of work. That's where the money should be spent. In 2017, the birth rate went below 300. It was in 2008, the birth rate went below 400. So, those people are going through the schools. You're going to have 900 in the school, the middle school, so you need an updated enrollment study by a legitimate firm, not the firm that did this 1,200, because that's not legitimate, and you should ask them before you even consider for a referendum for an enrollment study from a legitimate outfit. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else like to speak for the council? Second time? Hearing done and declare public communications closed. Item 17, council communications? Hearing done. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Motion by councillor Denny, seconded by councillor Falk. All those in favor, by show of hands. Nine, ten in favor, we have a sit, we have a water pollution control meeting, sorry, we gotta go right in?
I thought you were the ones that I was.
So, meeting, special meeting Monday, June 4, 2018, of the Water Pollution Control Authority. Item number one, roll call please.
Here. Commissioner Bosco, Commissioner Sikala, Commissioner Crisati.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Falk.
Here.
Chairman Ludwig.
Here.
Commissioner Mueller.
Here.
Vice Chairman Suzak.
Here.
Commissioner Ungary.
Here.
There's nine members present, two are absent.
Item number two, approval of minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the special meeting, May 21, 2018?
Remove.
By councillor Fox, seconded by councillor Noem. Any discussion, deletion on the minutes? Hearing done by a show of hands, commissioner. We have nine in favor, and any abstentions, deletions? Nine in favor and zero against. We don't have any special guests. Item four, old business, I don't think we have any. Item five, new business, I don't think we have any. Item six, items for discussion. Discussion resolution, authorizing the acting town manager to apply for and enter into agreements related to the Clean Water Fund. Acting in its capacity as the Water Pollution Control Authority, resolution authorizing the town manager to execute documents related to the Clean Water Fund financing for water pollution abatement facilities, whereas work continues at the WPC upgrades project, whereas the total cost of work has been estimated $31,357,038. Whereas upon application, approval, and official fund allocation, clean water grant funds are available to fund $5,658,559, 20% of eligible expenses, and whereas low interest 2% loans are available to fund $23,169,235, the balance of eligible expenses. And whereas as a result of the recent appointment of the acting town manager, Connecticut DEP requires a new resolution, an incumbency certificate to be adopted. Be it resolved that in the best interest of the town of Enfield to enter into a contract with the state of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. In furtherance of this resolution, Christopher W. Bronson, the interim town manager, is duly authorized to enter into and sign the contracts on behalf of the town of Enfield. The interim town manager is further authorized to provide such additional information, execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with the contacts, contracts, and to execute any amendments, rescissions, and revisions thereto. Be it resolved, further resolved that the town clerk is authorized to impress the seal of the town of Enfield on any such document, amendment, revision, or revision.
So moved.
By councillor Noem, seconded by deputy mayor, excuse, by commissioner Noem and by commissioner Suzak. Any discussion on the resolution? Hearing done, roll call please.
Commissioner Crisati.
Four.
Commissioner Davis.
Four.
Commissioner Denny.
Four.
Commissioner Falk.
Four.
Chairman Ludwig.
Four.
Commissioner Mueller.
Four.
Vice Chairman Suzak.
Four.
Commissioner Ungary.
Four.
Commissioner Arnony.
Four.
Commissioner Sikala.
Four.
There's ten in favor, none against, and no abstentions.
Item number seven, miscellaneous, I don't believe we have any miscellaneous. Anyway, item eight is a motion to adjourn. Councillor Ungar, I mean, commissioner Ungar, seconded by commissioner Suzak. All those in favor, by a show of hands. Those opposed, we have ten in favor. There again.